Good evening, doctor.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm not joining y'all in person. It's I'm thankful for the ability to join virtually this evening. Thank you.
Well, we're glad you're here, but it was also your night to bring the donuts, so.
Oh, no, no.
Twinkens night to bring the donuts, but I guess that would be considered, that would be considered.
You can be God.
That, oh my, well, then I'd like to call this a wrap. Thank you. Go forward, my children. Thank you.
I don't just.
Let me know when you're ready. I was looking for a print of the agenda. All right. It's like to call the.
Make sure my phones are on.
It's on. I'd like to call the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Marvin Planning Board meeting to order. We have a quorum. Well. Yes. And when, Austin, when would you like to get Melinda in?
Let's go ahead and do, let's go ahead and do that now. You guys do have a policy for remote participation. For the policy, you all must vote to allow Melinda to participate. So I just need someone to make a motion to allow her to participate remotely.
Make a motion to allow Dr. Melinda into our planning board meeting remotely.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Kelly.
All in favor? So moved?
You're good to go.
Dr. Melinda, you're in.
Thank you.
We expect great things from you.
The pressure, the pressure.
All right, so adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to go through all of the agenda items? All eight thousand of them. All right, anyone want to make a motion to approve? Are there any changes?
Changes.
Second. Michael, that's second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, so moved. All right, adoption of the previous minutes. We had several minutes to approve for this one. One including our canceled meeting due to no quorum. Does anyone have any questions, changes before someone makes a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Meeting that is previously.
Do we need to call them out?
It's fine. You can keep it like that.
Okay, list it on the agenda. How about that? Can I get a second? Ken and all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. So moved. All right, election of office officers, chair and vice chair.
Okay, so as you know, the positions of chair and vice chair of the planning board come up every year. First of all, if there's any, you all are free to make nominations, nominate one of your colleagues to be in either one of those positions. I'd recommend starting with chair first, and then you guys will vote on the nominations.
The Rich and Kelly team are happy to continue going forward, but if anyone would like to step up and raise their hand, we're happy to take nominations.
I am happy to formally nominate the continuation of the Rich and Kelly team.
A second.
Okay, and now uniformly need to vote.
And we do not vote, correct?
Everyone votes.
Everyone votes.
Everyone.
We have to vote ourselves in. All right. All right, so all in favor?
Hi.
All right, so moved. The chain is around your ankle, brother.
Congratulations.
Congratulations indeed.
Um. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
There was one or two names.
All that are here are applicants.
Or presentations. Okay, all right, and there's no one online. All right, then let's get going. We really, is there someone on there? Oh, these are just applicants that are here. Yeah.
But I didn't know if they had, okay.
Yep, so we will start with the discussion of the Marvin Day Celebration.
I'll just ask to put this on the agenda, just to remind you all that the Marvin Day Celebration is coming up on Saturday, June third. We are always looking for volunteers, so if you want to volunteer to help with the event, you want to volunteer your spouse, your children, your relatives, the ones you don't see that often, we will, we'll take all the help we can get.
I've got a big tent I'll volunteer to need, twenty by twenty tent.
You got what?
I got a big party type camp, twenty by twenty. I want to have donation of that. I can very much donate it to you guys. Have it set up for you.
Sounds good. We'll be in touch.
Yes, please.
Yes, that's Saturday, June third. We'll be doing an opening night event here at Village Hall the night before. It'll be a meet and greet with the council. They'll give some tours of the building, and we'll be going over a recently adopted park master plan. Or more details on the, on the, all the events for the, for the festivities, you can check our website at marvinnc.gov.
Plug.
Yes, that's a shameless plug. That's it.
All right, so I was putting it on my calendar. Wear sunscreen. Is it, again, is it going to be at multiple locations around Marvin?
It's going to be a little simpler than last year. We're starting out in the morning at Marvin Elementary with our five K and fun run, our health fair. We'll then transition to the, to the park for the rest of the day. So you, so the entire rest of the day from eleven AM until, until the fireworks show at night will be at the park.
Okay.
Firethorn will also be holding some events that day, including an open house and art expo.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Mark and Rex, master plan.
It's me. Yeah, you want to go? All right, thank y'all for allowing me to speak at your meeting. My name is Derek Durst. I'm the public facilities manager here for Village of Marvin. So for the past year or so, we've been getting a process going of seeing what we could do with our facilities, and we reached out to a couple of different bidders and the company that I've interacted with for a couple of years now, McAdams. We hired them to put together some conceptual plans, both for the park and for the property adjacent to here. What you'll see up on your screen is what the village council sort of decided to kind of put all their efforts into. So we received five hundred thousand dollars from the state. I don't know. We, yeah. With the help of one of our local House of Representatives, House representatives, we were able to secure five hundred thousand dollars from the state to go towards park in, here in Marvin, and so council decided to explore the options of the property here. So what we're doing is reaching out to the Parks and Rec Trust Fund of the state to seek a matching grant for that. So that's the, the purpose of me being here and stuttering over the microphone is to tell you that the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund awards matching grants to local governments, parks, public beach access, and improvements in state parks. The statewide program helps local governments reach their park and public access goals to improve the quality of life in their communities. So McAdams is helping us put together a nice application to submit to the trust fund at the end of the month, beginning of May. And one of the things that we have to do is to tell you guys as a local civic group that the village is intending on doing that and solicit your feedback and hopefully garner your support ultimately. If you, you know, give your support, then Austin can type up a letter, you know, saying that the Village of Marvin Planning Board is in support of this. What, what you see up here is a conceptual idea of what the park can look like, and that's not what I'm asking for your support. I'm asking for your support on the idea of going to the Parks and Rec Trust Fund for a matching grant. So five hundred thousand is the most that they'll do, and so that's what we're going for. Hunter's done this before. So Hunter, do you want to chime in, say anything?
Uh, yeah, the part of process, I mean, it's basically kind of presenting it to you guys tonight is kind of checking a box on the application to try receiving as much points as possible for when the part of board reviews these applications. It's a good opportunity for the village to see grant funding. As Derek's mentioned, like this is a conceptual design. This is what we'll be going for. But, uh, with that being said, it's you know, the intent of this from the council of why we selected this conceptual design was mainly of this kind of being the centerpiece of the Heritage District, trying to maybe look at providing an opportunity for a gathering place, and I think it's a good opportunity, and hopefully we'll get some funding for it. And then the last thing I'll mention is, so the applications for, I can't remember if you mentioned this there, but part of applications will, are due at the end of April. Once receipt, or once, you know, they get through the review process, we should know if awarded anywhere from late August to early October. If awarded, then we accept the fines, and you're looking typically the part of process, you know, from like two to three years of completing the, the scope applied for. This whole project would not necessarily be within that scope, but you know, the process, the project itself is, is what we're going, like I said, trying to get a start somewhere.
Do you have an idea how like, how many people it'll accommodate, like how big it is? I can't really tell from the picture.
I mean, the total property, I think, is what, just over three acres?
And that portion.
We disturbed an acre with this building.
It's roughly, it's roughly about where the amphitheater and the multipurpose line is probably acre and a half. Because as Derek mentioned, we just served an acre on this site.
I don't, I don't think it's a Verizon wireless amphitheater.
Yeah.
No.
I was concerned about parking issues if you'd have events.
Yeah, and that's, and that's come up a lot, so it's not anything that's foreign to council to address. When I first saw this design, the Matthew Stumptown Park kind of came to my mind. I drove by down there the other day during the middle of the week, and there was nobody there. And, you know, people are driving up and down the road, but then for events, they close off the block, and you could walk anywhere from, you know, a hundred yards to half a mile to get to that area. And so visually what I saw and what I've seen in my mind is smaller than that, but because that, that little lawn, that lawn there is pretty small. But, but yeah. Yeah, and, and listen, I, I agree, council agrees. They know that it's, again, this design is conceptual. You know, we, we got feedback on the design itself, and, you know, heard tons of mixed reviews from, we love it, it's pretty, to we don't want concerts in Marvin. We want to see a playground.
I'm curious, there's a survey on this, is, do it, are we going to have a, any kind of, you know, response from that survey?
Uh, I'll, I'll put the, I'll, I'll give the survey to McAdams and let them kind of compile the data and put it up, package it up, and then they'll come back to council with it. So, yeah, there is a survey that's up till the end of the week.
Specifically about the amphitheater?
Yes.
Okay, because I know amphitheater was something, when we did the, the land use survey years ago, I don't know, five years ago. Amphitheater was one of the suggested uses. It was, it was, it was in, people were in favor.
That was about, I think it was sixty-one or sixty-eight percent, and that's including the strongly approved or strongly, or strongly agree or agree. So you had sixty-eight percent roughly in favor. But the intent of this would also, it's, it's, even though the term amphitheaters there, it's, it's mainly more of a multipurpose, open facility. The actual programming use, I mean, all cons, whatever, once again, we come after the fact. It's, you know, that stuff is, you know, people will say like, why don't you have all that figured out now? It's like, we're not going to spend the time on that unless we get awarded, and we know it's coming.
Once, I mean, obviously, I would, I would imagine everybody's in favor of the application. It's just the details. So you don't need details to apply.
No, no, we just need a, a site specific master plan, yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, and that can be conceptual.
The only, the, the main thing I've heard about the amphitheater and talking to others, residents, is the fact that it's right, right close to the neighborhood. But the positioning of amphitheater, I would think, is positioned in order to not have that, you know, sound.
Yeah. Yeah.
So is there a
It's facing a potential commercial Heritage District property.
Right, which is, I think, a very good thing for the Heritage District. And I was thinking, if there's any kind of study or whatever, I don't, you know, no money spent, or is something to find out about the sound quality of the way it's positioned and the size of the amphitheater could help in responding to those concerns as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mel, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add is, you know, for general feedback, I think if we're going to call it a park, I do think that, you know, the playground over at Marvin Eford is used a good bit, but I think if we're going to put a park and we're going to do things and we're designing this to be family friendly and as a gathering place, I do think that a playground we're going to call it a park. I do think that a playground, I understand there's parks without playground things, but for people gathering and whatnot, I do think that would be very nice.
Yeah, there was a lot of comments very similar to that, so McAdams is aware of that, and they're, they're going to add that into their scope of potential suggested ideas, you know, that could come about. But again, I mean, at the end of the day, that's, it's up for village council to to decide what exactly is going to go in there. This is conceptual. This is what we asked McAdams for. What can we do with this space? We knew, like, like Kelly said, there, an amphitheater type of open green space was something the residents wanted to see, and so this is what they came up with, and, and we've got some hurdles to cross too with hydraulic study and, you know, figuring out some drainage, so. But conceptually, you know, it is what it is, but we'd love your.
I, I had two questions. One regarding to the grant. Is this something that we're competing against other people for, or?
Okay, yeah, it's a very, it's a very competitive process. I've seen it where you'll see the part of board literally grants seven splash pads one year. Then the next year, you'll have ten municipalities apply for splash pads, and nobody, and they won't fund a single splash pad. It's just like, it's kind of come and go. I can't remember the total pot. It's typically
couple.
It's a couple million. And what, you know, the other thing I'll mention, it's like, it is conceptual. Most of the times what they're, they're funding is, is like the conception, the conceptual part of the park and what amenities they are providing, the actual layout and certain details is then worked out during the engineering phase after awarded. I know when I worked with Rutherford College in their previous one, it was a Greenway type park with some amenities, and what, what they went for in their, for their conceptual and what actually ended up was kind of two different things, but it's kind of, it's, once awarded, there's kind of a contract, and you got to fall within those parameters, and as long as you really provide the amenities and and certain things, you might do minor change orders with with that, but overall, it's, it's mainly going for the, the, the concept of having a park with the, these amenities on the site.
Understood. So are we, is this like for, it's a pod for Western Carolina, or is for the whole state?
It's the whole state.
It is all.
And if I recall, it's like, the board is, it's broken up into districts per se for the board, but it's like, overall, it's still, it's a, it's a state board, part of board level decision.
My other comment had to do with shape. Since we're in Marvin, we're, we're equestrian. We also have Marvin Ridge Mustangs and, and all potentially a horseshoe shape on this. So instead of a more oval, maybe doing something so it's a little bit more open.
Does kind of look like a lead net.
Trying not to. So it, right, it looks like a commode seat.
But.
So that's why I was thinking.
Only the elongated.
We'll be looking at it from the air, but, you know.
But I said.
They don't see it.
So, so, so I thought maybe if, if potentially, as we come down, it just opens up like a horseshoe, so just, yeah, on that side, then maybe you could put a playground back on there.
I'll leave that to the landscape architects to design.
I like to get it out.
No, I'm sure if you, if you tell that to Kim Vandenberg, she will, that will. No, I'm sure if you, if you tell that to Kim Vandenberg, she will, that will forever be burned in her mind, so.
And I have, I have a couple of questions and I can take some of this offline if we need to, but. How, I, I'd like to know where the planning board falls into this because I'm assuming that this would, once approved, it would have to go through planning board for approvals? Or would they go through parking racks?
Ooh, that's a good question.
Um, well, you're building a straw, it's. Depends on actually with how the U D O maybe ends up in a few months on how that reads, but through the current process. It's. Because it's a residential lease owned lawn and it's a non-residential use, it may have to quote unquote go to DRB, I, I don't know. It may have to go to DRB, but. But once again, that's, that's when, that would be after the fact when permits are pulled. Based off of our current ordinance.
Okay, the other question I have is, how restrictive is the state funding because. State funding is a big pain and. Like, I know this is conceptual, but like, if approved. What are you allowed to do or change once you, once the grant is approved? Like, what's your wiggle room in there? Like, are we, is this what we get or, you know, like, what if? We're like, this doesn't really need, the, the site prep doesn't really.
There's wiggle room, but not like, you're not gonna. You're applying for the concept of having an amphitheater, multipurpose lawn and all that other stuff, like you, you wouldn't be able to necessarily change out. Wanting to put.
We wouldn't switch it into a pump track or a, you know, a dirt bike park or something like that, yeah, I mean, they're, they're gonna want it to. Be very close to that.
So there's cer- there's certain wiggle rooms within the parameters that can be kind of done and administrative and then the other. That has to potentially seek an amendment for the part of board on, on that, but once again, they're funding the application for the site. And the amenities provided within that site.
Okay, and then, do you, have you guys just done a? General cost, like, is this even possible to do with the amount of money that you're hoping to?
That's where it'd be done in phases, as I mentioned, like, most like the, and I would have to double check with McAdams, but what, what the part of application would be mainly for the site prep, probably the amphitheater itself, like the landscaping and other things would be an additional cost of the village. Would pay for, or we would go for it all in once, but. Certain things, amenities would have to be done to meet the grant parameters. So.
Is there a timeframe?
Like, yeah, it's, it's. I want, I'm pretty sure it's three years after award, after awarded and everything's signed off on, it's like three years from start to completion.
Yeah, it would definitely be a phased approach for this one. McAdams quoted this at three point two. I think that's. Very high personally. But obviously we don't have three point two if we're getting five hundred thousand dollar matching grant. So yeah, it would be a phased approach, I think council's discussed to. This being the geo bond they discussed.
It's possible there could be a geo bond question, it would be a separate question from the roads and green space.
Yeah, okay.
What's the projected timeframe? What's, three, is there a, a cost increase percentage built into that?
I mean, there's always contingency, but.
Yeah, I mean.
And one of the other questions, what about restroom facilities? Since we could potentially be having.
What this site's for.
Several hundred people out there.
Yeah.
With the back of the amphitheater potentially housed. I mean, is there a law that says you have to have X amount of?
You could potentially have restrooms on the back of the amphitheater, and then there's, you know, the way that village hall was set up was to have the.
Allowed for access.
Access here to the restrooms.
Yeah, I didn't know if you'd want to have this open at the concert.
Yeah, all good things for. Council to decide.
Who's technically writing the grant?
McAdam.
McAdams, yeah.
Oh, McAdams.
Yeah, it's, it was in the scope that. They would write the grant, they, you know, they gave us our to-do list and to put together a successful application, so we're trying to hit all those checkboxes. But they're, they're gonna write it for us. They're the experts, so.
Successful, I guess, in the past.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well, it just depends on also what the state's priorities are from year to year as to whether or not you're.
Yeah, no, they've, I mean, they've got staff that, that's what they do, so they know what to, how to write it and what needs to be done.
There's always Marvin fundraisers. It's not like we don't have deep pockets around here, so.
Big scoreboard for the high school, so you never know what you do here.
Yeah, and that's, that's an, and I've seen it happen too in, in Bowdies, like, they had a grant. The council didn't necessarily want to pay for it and a nonprofit raised money, it was like the friends of. One of the parks, I don't know, either way, they raised the money and did the, and donated to the. To the town for the match, so there's ways around it, it's just, once again, the first step, it doesn't, it doesn't cost anything to apply, I mean, in this case, like, yes, we, we have a consultant, but. It doesn't hurt to ask for funding and if you get it, and that's when you kind of get into the details. So do you need a, like, any type of motion of support or?
Yes, because I'll need a copy of the minutes, so if you guys could just make a motion. And, yeah, I'll think, and then maybe, I need a letter of support that come from the chair. Or. Okay, we'll work that out later. Thank y'all.
Good luck.
Give me one second, I'll draft a motion for you all.
They're such babies. Your motion's drafted.
Focus is part of their package, you'll have a whole bunch of hand templates for us. AI is coming, I mean, soon won't be here.
What are the state's priorities for the parks and rec this year? Even have you looked at like what they're?
No, I mean, if you go on the part of website, I mean, it, it shows you what they've done over the past, since ninety-four, I mean, it breaks it down, it's, it's kind of neat, you know, it shows you. Different regions and how much money's been allocated to this and that, I think, I think there's percentages up to state parks and then to local parks. And so it's, I mean, it's a little bit of everything.
Driving.
So.
What's the.
So you, if someone can say, if someone can so move this to endorse the village of Marvin's efforts to seek a grant through the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund.
Can you say what for? For improvement.
For improvements to the Villa Hall site.
So moved.
Need a second?
Y'all in favor? Hi. Good luck.
Thank y'all.
Very nice.
Right. Moving on to the discussion recommendation of special use permit application. Twenty twenty-three dash three to allow an accessory structure that exceeds the maximum height or size permitted on a lot greater than three acres. Per one point one. One five, one point oh five four C, Hunter.
All right, so the village has received a special use permit application from. Mister, is it Shively? Is that a good, Sha- Shively and Mister Gray, they are the property owners of nine eight two five Saddle Avenue. The request is to. Allow for an accessory structure that exceeds the maximum height or size permitted on a lot greater than three acres per one fifty-one point zero five four C. Which one fifty-one point zero five four is our accessory uses and structures section. Getting into it, that language basically. States that on, on, on properties that. The acreage is greater than three acres, an accessory structure can exceed the height, the maximum height and size permitted, which is typically two thirds of the. Footprint, the square foot, footprint of the primary structure, as long as a special use permit is granted by the village council. The additional requirements for that would be that the accessory structure shall not exceed five thousand square feet and the maximum height of any accessory structure is thirty-five feet. Getting into. The land use and zoning, so the property, the subject property is on Marvin Residential, it is surrounded by. Residential property as well as common open space of Ennis Brook. Those all properties are all on Marvin Residential as well, the proposed site is, the barn is actually to remove this structure and build a new one. So this would be the location of the structure on the site. The. Common, you know, our Marvin residential lot characteristics are fifty, yeah, it's a back, fifty foot yard setbacks, twenty foot on the side, twenty-five foot for corner lots and forty on the rear. This property does, is subject to an eighty-five foot view shed buffer right here, so their structure is being proposed to not encroach into that buffer. So getting into review or discussion, as mentioned. One fifty-one point zero five four B for detached accessory uses and structures. The typical setbacks and requirements are ten feet or the same as the side of the principal structure, whichever less will apply. Ten feet on the rear, the height of an accessory structure, so not exceed the height of the principal structure and the, the maximum sizes, total square footage of all accessory, all accessory detached structures shall not exceed two thirds of the footprint of the principal building. The proposal. Of this is proposing a detached accessory structure of four thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet. Only six hundred and seventeen of that square, six hundred and seventeen square feet of that structure will be heated. The proposed building is also twenty-six feet tall, which is less than the thirty-five feet additional requirement. The lot characteristics would comply, the structure is being proposed roughly forty feet. Forty feet off the rear, sixty-one feet off the. Interior side property line and a hundred feet from the right side property line and Marvin School Road, which is, once again, does not encroach into that view shed buffer. So. As council will make this planning board, you know, kind of reviews this and provides them a just recommended findings of fact. Those are the following, one, the use may, will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. Staff finds that, you know, this would comply, the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the ordinance. Again, it's under the five thousand requirement as well as the building requirement and it, and it complies with all applicable setbacks. So staff finds that to comply. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties or the use is a public necessity, the proposed barn's a pretty high quality. Structure. And so staff finds that, you know, that compiles as well. Location and the character of the use, if developed according to plan and the submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area. Of which it is located and will be generally conforming with the chapter of the Village Marvin Land use plan and staff finds that it complies. And then the additional review, review criteria as outlined in the section one fifty-four, one fifty-one point zero five four is that it shall not exceed five thousand square feet. And shall not exceed a height of thirty-five feet, staff finds that that compiles as well. With that being said. Staff recommends that planning board recommend the approval with that finding of fact. And at this time, I'll have any questions for myself or I can't answer them, be happy for the applicant to, to step in. I know in your packets. I included the application and the, the proposed site plans middle. Of the site.
What's the use going to be?
Car storage.
What's that?
Uh, storage for cars.
Cars, storage or car storage and showing or?
Just storage.
Just totally stored.
From my understanding, they collect nice, very nice cars.
It says, large garage showroom with office, bath and lounge area.
That's what I was asking, showroom means showing.
They would not be able to use this for any type of home occupation per our ordinance for like any type of business. That would be a, it's a whole separate thing, for the structure to be used for this storage, could be personal showroom, but they won't be able to use this for any type of business.
To just have friends and family over, have a nice little place to hang out.
Yeah, but I collect every car, scars that I remember. Not the cars most people want. And it's for me to go in and enjoy, I don't sell them. And the office area and the lounge area, the offices for me. And.
Just curious for what cars? I'm just curious.
I did make from a forty-two Chevy pickup that my grandfather taught me drive stick on to a seventy-eight. So I did a. That kind of thing. I'm not a Ferrari, I'm a Gini kind of. So to your point, well, so that's just a little bit more semantics, because that was a couple of like questions, because it says, born residents. And we know that accessory structures aren't supposed to be residents, so it's just like, let's just get rid of the words on the plan, thing like that.
Yeah, I mean, I saw that, that, you know, bath, shower area and everything, you know, I understand the use, you know, I, you know. And, you know, if you're out there doing things with your cars and all, and you don't want to go to the house and everything, I understand that. I'm curious, what's the size of the, the dwelling?
Thirty, three, thirty, a hundred, somewhere.
Okay.
And just to make it funny, we invested significantly in improving the residence. And the grounds are between about five hundred and fifty, seven hundred dollars. This structure is. With a large span. If, if, my, my thinking in the legal is if somebody wanted to have horses in that one day, they could do that, it certainly would accommodate it. There's a separate entrance from Marvin School Road, so not.
No, you said Marvin School Road? No, Marvin Road, I live on Marvin School, so I know exactly, and I've been by your house and everything, and you're right, it does look nice, you've done some good things to the elevation of your property.
Well, we want to improve our values and everything else.
Sure. Yeah. And the only other thing was, you know, the access from Marvin Road. Obviously, we got, you know, there's a lot of traffic situation. Is that gonna be used very much? I mean, even for your sake, I mean.
If you, all of these are ultra home mileage, so for instance, I have an beach, Cadillac with three thousand miles on it.
Oh, wow. What kind of Cadillac? Oh, really?
Yeah, so they don't get a lot of roads high.
Sure.
So it's not a driver, I don't legally pay anything out for the road.
Well, I figured that, that's, you know, if that's your purpose for sure.
Yeah.
My uncle had an eighty-two El Dorado Berets, yeah, yeah. Yeah, oh, really? It's cool.
So that, I think that was one of my questions as well, because with the new concrete driveway, so it's just gonna come up to Marvin Road, because right now you have some gravel that's there and. Yeah, some term grass over or something. What are the other questions I had, because Hunter had said in here that, and let me go back to my notes, it said about the other property, I think it was what, ninety-eight sixteen saddle that you could potentially put more screening there? Has that neighbor said anything to you about putting screening in there? Are they, they're okay with this? No, and the reality of this, we're going to landscape two thirds of the property, I haven't done the area around the yard yet. Only screen on the back side, only screen on the Marvin Road side, the intention is to screen with the other side of what we call the pasture as well. Okay.
I would think you'd want that, so, yeah, I live tomorrow at school and I've got, you know, Leyland Cypress, the Rose and all that stuff, so I understand all that stuff.
Yeah, the, the significant, I mean, the view shed buffer already provides a good amount of, you know, screening from Marvin Road. With the rear, I guess, adjoining property being common open space of. Ennis Brook, there's already some plantings there, so once again, it's, it's pretty well. You know, screened from adjoining properties already.
The only thing I have for you was, and I asked him about the dwelling size, I just want to know, I haven't looked into it, I should have probably, is there anything in the ordinance is about. Accessory structures, size versus the actual dwelling size.
That, that's what this is, so since the property is over three acres, the property itself is three point three, three point two five. Our ordinance allows for accessory structures to exceed that maximum of the two thirds of the footprint with the approval of special use. On top of, as you mentioned, it will have the agricultural feel to it. Our ordinance allows for this. Our ordinance allows for those agriculture buildings. Uh, it calls that basically it can have no animals and it's can be stored, anything can be stored in it. And that's where this, that's why this is being applied for because per the ordinance, it can be considered that way.
Um, is the shed and the frame utility building, they're existing?
The, the structure here? Are you going back?
That's on the, on the plan. I think that is.
Yeah, they're existing. Both of those would be demolished. Or removed because I want, if I recall, that one of the sheds is like in disrepair, correct, or pretty?
Yeah, I was like, I thought that's, I thought that's what I remember saying.
Eliminate that entirely. The shed, we intended to be as a shed, uh, but it's small. And we did redo that from the outside as well.
The Marvin Road side with the one garage and then you have the double door on the side entry. I'm just curious, what's the purpose of that? You're not gonna have a climate control?
Uh, we will have only on the land where.
Okay. Gotcha. And you're gonna allow some folks to come and look at your cars sometime? Just kidding, I'm just.
Only their early sixty stingrays?
I'm just kidding.
Are there any more um questions specific for the application and the the use itself?
I think it's a major improvement of the property, that's for sure.
Um, the only thing I would, I would um say is, I mean, it is gorgeous and I myself love cars, so. Although I have to have an SUV, so, um, but the lounge area. It looks like right now it just has, you know, like a utility sink and like a mini fridge. Just can't put any kind of cooking, anything in there else that it becomes a dwelling and it's a whole another situation. It's beautiful though. All right, anyone have any other questions or concerns? Melinda, anything online?
No, I love it and feel like I need one of those up on the hill as well, so I'll keep you. Oh, that's absolutely, it's a, it's a really nice um looking building. Well done.
So you guys do have a draft motion in on your screen if you if want, if you do feel so inclined to use that.
So with number one on there, so we really don't need to, neighbor isn't asking for additional screening, does that need to be in there? As you said, you're putting more out there anyway, so do we want to?
Well, these recommendations are just ones that, um, once again are within the means of, uh, like we can't require anything crazy for a special use permit. The screening and stuff is once again is already adequately provided. It's pretty much, if this is approved, looking at their, when they get their zoning permit from me. Be looking at their landscape plan per the ordinance and all that stuff, like really everything's gotta comply anyway. Those extra, um, like I put these conditions in there just for your potential discussion purpose, but for the most part, if approved, they have to comply with these anyway.
I mean, just for your own safety. I mean, it's, if it's lit up, there are gonna be a lot of lucky lose driving. I mean, this might be a traffic incident. Like we might have people running off the road, like trying to see. I would, I would screen it for the safety of your cars.
It will be different than the one that Marvin School Road at Joe Carr.
We just don't want any more cars running up light poles.
But I would think that they would go for the screening as much as possible. It's definitely a benefit.
All right, um, does everyone, does anyone need to know where Austin's motion is?
I can also read it if you do.
His, his dra, his draft motion reads to recommend approval to the village council with the following conditions, and then he lists out three conditions.
Those three conditions being the applicant will provide additional screening if needed along the rear inside property line. The proposed structure will not be lived in nor can be converted into an accessory dwelling in the future. And the proposed structure cannot be used as a customary home occupation office per one fifty one point oh four five.
Loud and proud, brother. Say it loud. Just say so moved. Aye, congratulations. We're all very jealous. Um, all right, moving on to um our designers award function to review the signage plants for the Dunkin Donuts project located at Marvin Gardens. This is going to be the highlight of my husband's life.
Yep, so this one actually is gonna be pretty quick, um, or should be in theory, but uh. And I mean that, I don't mean it is, I just mean that basically per the ordinance of the Marvin Gardens ICD development standards. Out parcel or buildings are allowed to ground or to wall mounted signs. Uh, incidental directional signs, any of that stuff has uh has to go to DRB for approval and then, you know, affirmed by council. Really, the only thing in this application that's being considered by you guys is that one directional signage, um, which I think it's sign B. Get to the um application here, sorry. Yeah, that might be it. So here, there, the site plan is here. So it'd be this one directional signage.
Is it backlit? I, there's, there's so, I kept having a flip.
So the channel is. Now backlit would be coming towards it.
Well, lit, a lit sign.
So it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, internally lit.
So I think we prohibit backlighting.
We allow for internal lit.
Internally, we do. It's backlight. It's so internal is just, it can be mounted in there and it'll, it'll glow, but back is, it's, the lights would be coming towards it. I guess it just puts on a different.
Well, it's a harder, you can't see a side if it's backlit. I mean it's, there is no light hitting the sign, like, I was trying to say internally lit, but my brain wasn't, you know, it wasn't happening. All right, so D, so it's over near.
It's basically the entrance of the drive through. Remember, if you recall when um building or out parcel two construction plans went through to the RB process, what, September of twenty one? Dunk.
That's just a random, why is the sign so close to the order window? I mean.
It's just pointing to, it's just pointing to the drive through, um, alley, to the, the drive through aisle lane.
Right, but you would already at that point know that you're in the drive through because it's almost right next to the ordering. Like to the menu, so, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a designer, but shouldn't it be a little further away to give, to show direction?
It's right here.
E, right?
It's just showing the entrance.
Down here, yeah.
Yeah, it's just showing the entrance. That, yeah, that is the menu board, correct. This is what the application is proposing, like I said, and the, and to be honest with this one, um, I've already talked to the sign company because about like the drive through signage. The, basically, if you guys recall with seven eleven, they had to do a text amendment to allow for certain signage. Outside of the way, finding like the additional signage for the ground or the um wall mounted and the one that says drive through. They would have to go through the text amendment process for approval, not DRB. The only, that's why the only thing you guys are reviewing technically with this is that one sign D. Because you, you, the sign B and one of the signs A are per, already permitted. I've actually already issued the zoning permit for that because they comply. Sign A and C on the rear uh would be ones that they would have to get a text amendment. It wouldn't be allowed through the DRB approval process because the ordinance specifically only allows for um two wall mounted signs. And it's gonna just the uh Marvin Gardens ICD states that any direction or or wayfinding type signage has to be reviewed through DRB. So this is where the applicant's proposing it, not at the the front or side entrance. This is where it's at. If you guys approve it this way, that's where it's gotta go. It can't be relocated unless they come back for additional DRB approval.
So is it more for cars as they come in? If they come in, they actually.
Yeah.
But if there's nobody lined up, I guess this would. You would go in there?
Yep, I guess so. That's my only guess and that, that's the only one they're proposing. If you guys recall, like seven eleven had three. I believe they had one at each entrance as well as I think one at the Newtown Road entrance. So this one's not to that extent, but it's again, it's just, it's a, it's a process thing, yeah.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I don't see anything wrong with it and doesn't.
No, it's.
Not very, it's not very wide.
No, it's four, it's four feet tall by what, two feet?
Yeah, four foot ten by two and a half wide.
Well, no, if you actually look at, if you look at like the, the, but if you look at like.
I wish I could like flip this around, but.
The line of cars, the sign is actually, so if this is the line of cars, the sign is actually almost here. So no one, no one outside of the line would even be able to see it. Actually, the, the car behind the one, the sign, you know, behind the one in front of the sign would be able to see it. It's just, it's just. It's just tucked back, so it's like, it doesn't make any.
Well, if there are cars in line, you're right, it doesn't make much sense. But if there are no cars in line and somebody driving on that side street would then say, oh, there it is, this is where I need to turn in to get to the.
But I mean, you would think that it would be closer like onto the building, pointing that way.
But if there are cars there, you're not gonna see.
I don't know, I, I don't. It doesn't make, it, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and like I said, the, any additional either way finding or directional signage, not proposing this, if they wanted to add more, they would have to come back and get approval. This is.
Best kind of thing is like, they have to come back because.
They did, yeah, basically, here's where we're at with this one. Duncan has subcontracted with the sign company and he's the middle man. Um, he's just following what they applied for in this. He conveyed to the um franchisee owner, the uh about the uh two additional signage that were not permitted on attached to the building. And like I said, this one is DRB's approval. Um, and this was the only one that's showing on their site plan. So if they wanted to do something different, they would have to to come back to DRB with a additional wayfinding and directional in a site, on the site plan.
I, I don't have any problems with the sign itself. I think the location is just not helpful.
I don't, I don't disagree with you and I think if there are cars in line, nobody's gonna be able to see it, but if there are no cars queued up. As you're driving down that side street, you're gonna say, oh, there's the entrance that I need to get into it. That's the only thing that I can think of why you would want it there.
I just, there's a better placement for it, but it's not my, not my uh.
Do it. I mean, would you put it further out where the parking?
Well, it, we're, but we're, but we're functioning as the design review board, so the design is fine. I mean, there's nothing. I just don't think it makes sense, but.
Well.
The design is fine.
As we have discussed, sometimes the DRB, it's, yeah.
We're just wearing the DRB hat, so.
Yeah, we just, if that's, like I said, we just need a motion for the design. Basically, what you guys are reviewing is the design and the sign, making sure it's compliant with the standards within the um Marvin Gardens ICD, which it is. It's nothing outrageous with height, and it's not doing any type of like marketing or, you know, actual advertising. It's just a directional signage for the drive through. So staff, I, like I said, the, the other two, when this was originally on the March agenda, and I talked to the attorney about this, was that the additional ones that weren't permitted, it was unclear if they could be approved by DRB or if it needed to be a text amendment. Needs to be a text amendment. That's what seven eleven did. I agreed with it. But was just trying to see if there was a way for the app to make it work. And so that was conveyed to, like I said, this is just on, still on your agenda for that one sign. Uh, I, I don't know if, like I said, they're going to men, come with back with a text amendment for like the drive through lane, with the, the additional signs on the wall or anything else on the site, but this is what we have right now and this is what's being presented.
All right. Anyone have any other, anyone have any comments, questions or issues with the design of the sign? All right, someone would like to make a motion to approve or deny?
It's, and it's a motion, it's in your system.
Baby steps.
They're, they're often written very specifically. I'll make the motion to approve the, well, the, the motion to approve the Duncan sign plan with the deletion of one or. Hunter, Hunter, do you think one of the?
Yeah, really, it's just to approve.
Hold on one second. Yeah, so that's, we're not.
Cause this was. This was just up, yeah, this was a carryover. Really, the motion would just be to approve the Duncan um directional signage as referred to sign D on the site plan as submitted because additional A and C do not matter.
Okay, I'm up there. Okay.
And it was signed D or B?
D isn't dog.
Yep.
Delta.
We need to refresh once you.
See how quick you scribe is. There you go. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Duncan directional signage as referred to as sign D delta as presented on the site plan.
Grab a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so move, moving on. Question and recommendation of Marvin Heritage District Form Based Code revisions.
So this is just kind of mainly discussion. Um, I'll kind of get into a few things here. Um, basically, since the form base code was adopted last January, I've always been putting in my to do list, ongoing to do list to just check things, maybe look at better ways to to enhance it and um the, now people, now property owners are go, you know, going through the rezoning process for commercial or or really hinting at at this, where we're looking at, you know, site plans, how it actually works. And I've kind of ran into a few areas of the ordinance that I didn't focus much on when I took this over just because it was mainly the residential and the buffer for those, the residential, because that was what the biggest concern from council was at that time. So some of these revisions is really directed towards one the permitted uses and special uses with that. Well, with the reason we set this up as a conditional district. It's special uses in a way should not have to go through the special use permit process after the rezoning. One's a quasi judicial, one's a legislative. It, it gets kind of tricky with that. So one of the recommended changes is basically like all the ones that say special use are going to be uses with additional requirements. All the requirements that's already in the ordinance would remain, basically, if the rezoning is approved and that use is proposed. Then all they have to do is comply with those additional requirements. No additional special use permit, because once again, the special use permit process is not. If it complies, it complies. There's not much where you have to like weigh on. It's kind of like, you're, you're more significant impact, you know, higher, um, what's the term, I guess. The impact use, like a higher impact use per se is more of what the special use permit. The impact use, like a higher impact use per se is more of what the special use permit is for, not. Certain things like a micro, I mean, micro brew could be considered, but like a restaurant serving alcohol like. I, so special uses for its. Yeah. Special use permits in general. Are ones where. You kind of have it. For the scary things, as Richard will kind of get into here in a minute, as we talked about earlier. We put these additional regulations in on certain uses within. The form based code. And really, if those things comply, especially you should not be, especially use permit should not be needed. If the rezoning is formally approved by the village council. It gets tricky because the rezoning is a legislative decision. The special use permits are quasi judicial's a decision. There's different type of. Processes involved with that. And. It's also, it's like the conditional zoning's with the, I mean, you're rezoning the property and it's like if they are site specific plan has. A restaurant serving alcohol. On it, you're, it's already being approved with that on it. Why should they have to then get a special use permit for it? So. One of the changes that's being proposed is basically. Taking out all the special uses. As special uses that have to receive a special use permit. And making them uses with additional requirements. And those additional requirements are already in the ordinance. And so those would remain. So basically, for example. Microbrewery. If that was being proposed on one of the site plans, would still have to comply with the following. Requirements. If they do. They can proceed. Does that mean you follow what I'm saying there? Correct. Because this was in there as special use permits when it was originally being proposed as conventional districts. Which makes sense slightly on some of these, but not all of them. With it being a conditional district and it having to go through that process and having that site specific plan, all that stuff. The special use permit. After the fact, or however you want to do it for those uses, like you're approving, like the, the council be approving the land for. A mixed use building where some of these uses like. In theory would go. There's no use for then a special use permit to be approved if the, those uses can apply with what's already. Written in the ordinance. So it's basically taking us, it's basically taking a step out of the process, but that step's not necessarily needed.
Is this applying to mixed use and or commercial and mixed use?
Yeah. And so in the. On the permitted uses, like I said, basically all the ones that say S. Will. Where it says special use requires a special use permit that, and I've been working on draft. I just didn't have a chance to finish it and get it for you guys. I'm just kind of going over some of the changes so we can discuss and I'll bring it back. No special use permit will be required. It will be. Uses with additional requirements. We did this in our regular ordinance for. Just for religious institutions, certain things like this is kind of a more appropriate approach because it's. It's, it's taking out the quasi judicial decision of something that's straightforward and not. A very like high impact type of use.
Basically, the whole, basically the special use process is redundant, considering that.
But it all. Correct. But it also gets tricky from a legal standpoint.
Okay. So then you're saying that we're, we're no longer to use a special use if the council approves or if we go with, along with this. So a microbrewery in this case would be permitted in, in a commercial, in an HD commercial.
In the, in the Heritage District.
Inherited District Commercial.
As long as it complies with those additional requirements.
Okay.
And so then who? Who is creating additional requirements?
They're already created.
What you're saying is, I'm just trying to track. Cause I have a hard time hearing this word. Is if we remove the special use permit. We create a set of additional. You know, rules they have to, well, they're already.
We already have those. That's what's, that's what's. Yeah. We already have these additional requirements. So basically. Like let's use. Restaurant serving alcohol. Like yes, this, this will like be removed because this is talking about a special use permit, but the additional requirements is that exterior guest area should not have amplified music. The lighting plan shall be submitted to planning and zoning administrator, which they have to submit the lighting plan for the development already as part of their site specific plan. And then there's just certain parameters like.
How did we let this go through?
It's. It's not, it's. It's, yeah, it's not necessarily like it went through. By accident. It's was there for protection. Once again, we added the, that was the other thing. It's like, if you guys recall. Before the form based code was adopted, we added these additional requirements because you can't then just have special uses, not really have anything to actually. The council to decide on them on, like you're, you're not giving them any kind of parameters to say if it meets X, Y and Z. But with it being a conditional district and it's already a. Separate process like. You're, you're approving the rezoning on the basis of that information already. So why should they have to then go and get a special use permit after the fact?
But this, because it's a conditional. Zoning district, it still gives us control over. What goes in. What goes in or what does not go in. Or how it goes in, like. Part of, I think part of. Part of maybe I think what, why the SUP was, was even placed in there was because we wanted to make sure that. We had control over what goes in the.
Correct. And then we switched that from when it was being presented as a conventional. District, meaning if every property was rezoned, those uses and. Apply those development standards apply if they were to. New build or change of use. So those special uses were put in there at that time where then, yes, you did kind of have that control, but you already have that control over the rezoning.
So if, let's say that there's a run on microbreweries and. We become, they want us to become the next south end. We can actually control how many, just through the conditional zoning. Process, control how many. Properties can get zoned. Or is it, if you need all the requirements, they get to have their, their.
The red.
Like what, what, how much control do we really have? Cause we don't want this to be another south.
Well, I'll, well, I'm going to pick on you for a second. Will's property wants, he wants to rezonate. The problem is he can't go through rezoning it without having a site specific development plan. Kind of what the, his and his goal and vision of that property is from a use standpoint, all of that. We. We already have the, we already have the uses in that, like we have these standards, like you apply. If you meet them, it's got a good shot, but at the same time, it's still a legislative decision. There's still things that can. You know, prompt a denial. Counsel just has to be sure that they. State why, careful reason.
I didn't know that we had to state why in a conditional zoning district.
You don't, you can shut your mouth and just not say anything, but. Yeah. I mean, if you want to step in, but.
Just let the man speak.
But like I said, there, that's, once again, there's a lot of things in, in the form base code and our ordinance that we'll get into with this whole UDO rewrite, but. This is kind of taking some steps to try to get some of this cleaned up. Cause I do know of some result ones that's already submitted and not, and this is one of them, like. We have a PIM tomorrow for a rezoning. They're proposing to have a, a tap room. The question came from their attorney was, does a special use permit needed? I talked to our attorney about it. There's already a court decision that we referenced. It's basically like if the conditional zoning is approving it on the basis of that is the use for that building. Then a special use permit is not necessarily needed. There's ways that we can do this and I'll kind of, this is why, once again, this is a preliminary type discussion, kind of get some direction is that. If Will, if Will was to come and not necessarily have a full detailed plan of the uses outlined or have a potential tenant, there's ways to set parameters where. Change in use or some type of thing can still be. Have to go through that process. Where you don't just kind of give a blink check to somebody for this rezoning, but that's the way this district's set up. It's not a blank check. You got to have this stuff figured out. So. Like I said, this is kind of just cleaning up where it's not a redundant type thing. After something's approved. For example, Marvin Gardens is a conditional district. All those are, they have their permitted uses outlined. They have additional requirements. None of those uses ever have to come get a special use, like it's, it was approved ba, on that basis. But. But to your point with the conditional zoning. Microbrewery. If we already have one microbrewery here. One of the discussions can be, it's got to be a mutually agreed upon condition by the legislative body council and the applicant that you can. State that, you know, this site will be limited to one microbrewery or none, like. But that's something that has to be mutually agreed upon and that stuff where. It just is kind of contingent upon how certain things develop and when.
And we can decide that as we go. Based on the applications that we're getting.
When we, you say we decide, it's, it's a decision that has to still be mutually, like we can state that, but if, if the applicant still wants to put a microbrewery in, it can't like. Once again, it gets to the legislative body. They could not for that reason, just. Potentially, but like deny it potentially, but it's still like, if that condition is mutually agreed upon, then yes, that is a condition of their approval that runs with their rezoning.
I think I'm. I'm confused because I thought that the conditional. Zoning district was to protect us so that we could control what goes in.
It.
Now I'm hearing you say that we can't.
No, it is, it's still there to protect how it's developed and, and, but once again, we've already created standards. So it's like. And once the rezoning is approved, they still have to comply with these standards regardless. They can't be more.
Talking about the uses that we've, the, the conditional uses that we've already approved. I'm talking about having too many of one use. Do you know what I mean? If like 50 nail salons wanted to go in. Do you know what I mean? Like, I mean, what, what, what you're saying is if literally we had 50 applications for nail salons. I mean, this is a ridiculous example, but I mean, you know. And if it's not mutually, I mean, like, could we then be sued because we're like, nope, you're the 35th, we're not approving anymore.
The council can deny the legislative, it's a legislative, once again, quasi judicial, they wouldn't be able to, because if it meets the parameters, you can't really control that. That legis, quasi judicial's decision is a more legal. Fancier. More. More, how am I trying to say this? It's like, you have to be more sharp in, in those discussions and how evidence, all that, because it's a court hearing. With it being legislative, yes, like. They can deny it. Keep their mouth shut. Hope nothing happens, but. It's, that's where some of that flexibility comes in. And that's why we did set this up as a conditional district. It still gives us that control because, once again, we're not rezoning all the properties at once. It's not just a conventional rezoning where you're kind of getting a blank check, like they have to have some very, they have to have their site specific plan and a lot of this stuff figured out. As part of their application procedure. And that's what gets approved.
I, I went to Hunter and asked him about like an office use for our property. To have it already rezoned. To go ahead, but not have it actually used for that. That is a possibility, but once, if it's done like that, but once the use gets ready. To be used, it's got to follow in every line of.
Well, and your property is so small, it's only, there are probably not that many uses.
Well, I mean.
For, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, it was like an.
Form base code is going to dictate, you know, the uses that.
But like, yeah, exactly. You're right. But like in an office use, whatever. Uh, it, it could be, but then after. No. After that, it would, you know, have to be approved for all the different aspects that would. You know, allow it to be like the ADA combines all this stuff, everything. So there's, there's other steps after that. I think that. Is additional to what he's saying too as well. I think.
Yeah, there's like, there's, like I said, this is kind of a very preliminary discussion. I'm working through trying to make sure we have. With, I mean, like I said, this is one of like the five changes being proposed. It's still where, you know, if it's a changing, certain things where we can still have, know what's going in and out and like double checking, but for the most part, if you're. In my opinion, like the way we kind of regulate, like if you're, if you're. Approving a site plan. That is being built in theory for a restaurant. Then they don't need to come get a special use permit to serve alcohol. From the village after the fact, like you put some parameters in there, we already have them, they meet that and that use can go within that. That building or on that site. As long as it still complies with those uses, or sorry, complies with those additional requirements. There's no use to have them, cause even then, when a special use permit gets approved, it runs with the land. So it's like. If something were to change within that, for example, if like one. Restaurant serving alcohol goes in there and then the use chain, like. It's there, like it's always going to be there. So it's the same, it's kind of the same consideration with the conditional rezoning. Yeah.
Okay. You said, what is your, and we don't have to discuss this tonight because it looks like this is going to be like a, it's definitely an ongoing thing, but. Why do you keep mentioning, mentioning the legislative and quasi judicial, like? Isn't, is conditional, I mean, or does it? Why, why are you mentioning both? Like?
Because the conditional zoning is a legislative decision.
Right.
Special use permits are a still decision by the council, but they, it's a quasi judicial process. Yeah, it's an evidentiary hearing all of that.
That's why you were referring to the two.
Yeah. And I know it's kind of confusing because once again, conditional uses, special uses used to be called conditional uses, all that stuff. So I, I understand that, like. But this is conditional zoning, there's extra steps, this process setup has requirements to even, you know, go through the process and. This change was one. Once again, that I've talked with our attorney, I've. Read some court case, read some days, it's like, if you're approving something and knowing that it's going there, there's no additional requirements that are needed. Or sorry, let me phrase that. There's no additional like special use permit that are needed. You can still have these additional requirements for that use as part of. The, the regulations that are in place. Yeah. But two different. So I'm going to just go highlight some of the other things that. I'm working on changing real quick or working on kind of amending and doing it the right way of bringing it back. The second one is. Dimensions for mixed use and commercial. We have like, yeah, like the lot dimension requirements. Makes sense, but the prob, problem is, is that the way this is set up is. Is somebody like Tim Fincher going to subdivide his lot to. Have these. Or is it more of like a plan unit development type or, or more than one principal building? On, on one site. So it's kind of regulating. Footprint, certain things. So it's really kind of clarifying lot size and what those requirements are for basically the commercial buildings, like obviously residential lots will have to be its own lots. So those would have to comply with those on a site plan. But these like, yes, you can have an out parcel. But it's really kind of clarifying. Setbacks and certain things like this. I kind of went back through some research. I figured out where Rohit got this from. He used it from Boston, but it was. Kind of. Kind of merged in a different way that I think this is where it kind of. Messed it up on really what the intent or how it was to be. Be. I guess used. And what I mean by that, it's like. Once again, like the lot size, if you look at, it's, it's looking at the minimum lot requirement or. So on, and then you have your square foot requirements for the condition, the commercial buildings, which we kind of do in that, and we get to into that in a second. But it's really taken this lot and really what is the intent? Because if somebody like Tim Fincher wants to put. You know, a conventional square commercial on it. Does he do multiple of those? And he doesn't have to have, I mean, it stays on one lot or. A mixed use of buildings and a building types. But what about the minimum lot size? So. I'll, I'll kind of explain more as we get into this, like in, in May, I'm just trying to go over this. For you guys tonight. The biggest, the other big change is going to be then in the building type itself. Size range for these commercial buildings. Cottage commercials not going to change. It's really going to be these ones where it say, states. See Village House wasn't, it was the Greek revival. You're allowing the footprint to be 5,000. Calling for it to be two and two and a half stories, but the size range is at 7,000. So it's like. So 5,000 for a footprint. If you calling for it to be two stories, yeah, you can have some unusable buildable space in that footprint, but you, in theory, you would think that the ma, maximum allowed square footage would be 10,000 square feet if you're calling for it to be two stories. It's just certain things like this where it's like. Trying to make sure that I, cause like I said, I've been going back through the original documents from Rohit. All this, but it's like, what was the actual intent here? Right. Once again, we're doing the square footage to kind of regulate the uses and how it, how it's broken down. Right, once again, we're doing the square footage to kind of regulate the uses and how it how it's broken down, but. This was one where you'll see that I'm, you know, recommending some square footage change not to increase, but it to make more sense, so. With the footprint and the actual size range of the of the mixed use building.
But you're specifically talking about adjusting. Building size square footage to accommodate.
The footprint.
One story.
Correct, because the footprint is, once again, if it's five thousand square feet, that's their footprint. Like it, the building can't be larger than that, like if it's a fifty by a hundred type building, but if it's two stories. Are we only allowing then for half of that second story to be usable per se as office space or or? Should it be allowed to be two stories of mixed, like, you know, of commercial retail office type spaces? So.
Well, and then if you're also. That we didn't approve that.
Prove what?
When we were initially talking about heritage districts and mixed use space, there was a conversation around.
Residential above. We do not allow that at this time.
So that's why I was, so really, we're talking two stories is the limit, like, we don't want anything going above that.
Correct, and like I said, it's it's the the intent of this and with the form base code is kind of having a showing with the aesthetics. And having that that feel of what we're looking for, but it's still some of these size ranges in the footprint is like. Is it practical to make sense for? On a mixed use or commercial site for. You know, adequate retailer, commercial, retail, commercial restaurant, whatever space. And I've had, like I said, this is kind of came up in conversations with different property owners on how how they're looking to develop their site, how it makes sense. And so, you know, this is when I started looking into it, I'm like, wait, does this really make sense? Because it's like. If you want to do a. Four thousand square foot building, you know, footprint, does that mean you can only like? Two store, it just kind of depends on the building type and everything, so. It's just trying to clean up and clarify. The the building type and size ranges aren't really that they're kind of like the low hanging fruit because it's it's not much that we need to clarify on, it's just like. Putting one or two like things in there just for clarification, but other than that, like you're the the big two changes is one, that special use and then the buffer. Buffer requirements, if you look at commercial only and make like it talks about a hundred foot tree buffer from new buildings as much depth as possible for existing buildings. If you take Robbie's property, if you take Scott White, like all that, like. There's one and an adjacent tree perimeter buffer from the preserve. The intent, yes, save trees, but it's like kind of clear, in my opinion, clarifying that. You can, I've seen language where it says that, you know, some of these can be separated by, you can have parking in the buffer, you can have like twenty five foot of tree perimeter buffer and that kind of. The goal is here is to separate the uses from the adjoining property uses, but I just think some of these are a little. When you really put it into play on some of these properties, it it really takes away their properties being to be developed in a way. And it would look look weird like because you're requiring, for example, like Robbie would have to have a hundred feet at the back, then he has to have fifty feet at the front. Where where where's the parking, where's the building going to go like it's not really practical to an extent, so. Yeah. Correct. Correct, because. And that that's like I said, the the intent of this was to kind of go through and put this on your radar. Potentially we'll have some draft language for you in May. Been doing a lot of research, been trying to like. Make sure it makes sense and we're doing it right and test it, it's just. I know certain things were put in here based off of public feedback on the survey, I mean, just the MHD board. Feedback, but like I said, I think then that was put in, put in there to kind of make sense to them or or to appease them, but then it wasn't really. Like I said, thought out of then how that actually applies, because if you really think about it, you're taking away, which if that was the intent of us really then limiting. The commercial retail space on some of these properties, that that's great, but then it's like you're never going to potentially then have those developments go there because it doesn't make it feasible for those property owners. So. It's it's clarific, like so for commercial only, for example, it talks about suburban residential, the hundred, then it calls for a hundred foot tree buffer from new buildings. And as much depth as possible for existing buildings. So take Robbie, for example, like if he wants to do an additional building on his site, then it's got to be a hundred feet off technically. The preserve common open space, it's a minimum of twenty five feet. So then that, yes, that is providing a hundred and twenty five foot buffer, but then it's also we're calling for a fifty foot view shed plaza buffer at the front. So it's like it's shrinking his property on where parking can go. Open space like it's just like really taking out that tree because we do already mentioned like parking. Open space and all that stuff can kind of be within the buffer requirements, but if you're going to have a hundred footed trees, you can't really use much unless you do some type of walkway like. Once again, the the intent would still to be to shed into buffer from those adjoining uses, but. When you look at it, especially on the commercial only properties outside of Wills. There's already a common open space buffer in between the actual res suburban residential use, single family residential use and. What would be a potential commercial use, so it's like the, what I'm saying here is like for a new for Robbie's site, like the building itself would still need to be a hundred foot from his property line. But it then allows for potential parking, some some landscaping and not necessarily like. In-depth kind of opaque trees. But those are the four things that I've called at this moment, like I said, I don't have a full solution at the current moment, it's just like when you start testing it, especially on the commercial only properties. It makes it tough and those are kind of all the sort of the smaller properties that are the that would be like the infill type development properties in theory, depending on who applies when, but. I think this is just certain things that need to kind of be considered and I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, it's kind of was my goal to have a little bit more. Just draft recommended kind of changes done, I just didn't have an opportunity today, had some random things pop up, so. But I still wanted to go through this with you, kind of get some initial feedback. And I'll have this presented back to you guys, kind of a final draft in May, not a final drop, but an initial draft of the changes with some research and kind of additional examples.
I just, I think this is the area where we have to be very careful because. Heritage District is is a gift that the village is giving to property owners to develop commercial where there was none before. And it is surrounded by rural properties and it should not be to the detriment of the rural properties that that folks get to.
Oh, and I.
Money on their property, so.
And I agree.
Tread lightly.
So when this district just kind of, when this history was originally approved, being a conditional, it was my understanding at the time, once again, like with. You could have some slight deviations, you know, if it's approved part of that site plan, well. After further research and comment and like talking to chaplain about it, like since we already have the minimum standards. You can't go less than the minimum standards if you have that, and so it's not necessarily, you can always go more restrictive to an extent. If it's agreed upon, but it's trying to find that nice middle of like. Okay, what makes sense and what can apply, but to your point, if somebody comes in and does the minimum of if it's fifty feet. Is that something that we need to look at and try to have a conversation with them and see if they are, you know, willing to maybe do seventy five feet or a hundred feet, it's. It's trying to really figure out what makes sense and what can work on these properties, I said, not necessarily to be developed to the maximum. Because I completely understand that, but it's like at least to make sense and look better. From a site, like site design concept, not necessarily. But but yeah, basically look prettier from a psych and design concept, because when you throw in the open space requirement, parking, building, it's like, how does it make sense for somebody to even? Develop one commercial building on their site.
I would love to see, instead of just. Verbiage and language, I'd love to see some actually real world examples of like.
We have them.
You know what I mean? Like it's it's easy to, this, I'm I'm just a visual that like. This doesn't, I'd like to see like an actual property, can we find an actual property that might be like, you could be our guinea pig if you wanted to. Be our, I mean, because you're, you actually have the toughest case, but. At the same time, we need to.
And and the other thing, existing existing buildings, we already have that clause in there where it's like existing buildings because they're. There, I mean, even though they're outfitted for the heritage history and the use, like they don't have to, we already allow for. Like, for example, in his property, it'd be one row of evergreen plantings, it's like the new buildings like. And once again, if somebody's going to propose a new building on one of these commercial sites, like how does it make sense to for them to do, like it doesn't like. And Robbie's like, well, I mean, I'm not picking on him, but if you look at how his side is, like you got this old, this house, house really has no value, it doesn't have any historical significance like so like. The White House or the Crane Store, but it's it's still one where, okay, if he wants to. In in a way, be better somehow, like keeping that structure, but it 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 it's one that couldn't even really be outfitted for commercial the way it's like laid out, in my opinion. Will's kind of has that opportunity because the way it's set up, but. Like he does have that opportunity, but Robbie in theory would probably demolish the house and build a new building or two. But then it shrinks because of the way that language reads with having a hundred foot tree buffer. And and that it's like really looking at those buffer requirements is trying to blend it, like when I say blend it like. You put it like, you have a tree perimeter buffer and you can potentially then allow for certain things, but it's like the building itself and the use itself is still. The same distance that whatever we're asking for, it's just kind of clarifying like. Is it a hundred tree tree foot buffer, is it a hundred foot buffer? And that's like, once again, it's more of the discussion that I'm having with you guys, but I want to. Present you guys some different examples of of draft regulations, then we can kind of discuss further. At the May meeting or or June, this isn't necessarily a rush slash, this could be something that we go ahead, we just incorporate into the U D O rewrite.
Well, yours, are you considering knocking the house down? Yeah, because I mean, I mean, yours is pretty much like like.
Just want to know if this is getting a bit off topic and we need to say.
We can keep going, but yeah.
Said this. And this is like, once again, this is one of the things that was going to be on the previous agenda, obviously, then we transfer it to you, I still wanted to kind of have this discussion because we are, I like, I have talked to four different property owners. And even though this code is a very good, you know, it's finite, it's pretty good, there's still some things that we, that's coming up and they're. You looking at trying to even get a, you know, conceptual plan together to start having the conversation of the rezoning process and moving forward. That they're reading that the ordinance reads this and they, it's really been limiting on their vision of their property. Once again, not trying to say that we are trying to. Cater to it and make it the most developable as possible, it's just like, these are some of the things that weren't really thought out or tested and we're just trying to now. Revise and double track and make sure we get what the best fit, the intent, all of that is for the district. At the end of the day, the goal is still to protect the rural character, protect the existing surrounding uses, it's just doing it in the best possible way.
This is extremely helpful.
Yeah. So with that being said, I I'm, that's all I've got, as I mentioned, I'll probably, I'll be working on some of those and be bringing them back to you and. We'll go from there.
All right. Can't believe we're almost at the end of this. All right, Marvin Development Ordinance, U D O project kickoff and discussion, congratulations.
Yep, so as of last night, the council.
Buckle up, kids.
The council did approve the the project and had advisor. I guess directed Christina to enter into the agreement for the U D O rewrite within focus. I guess I'll let you introduce yourself if you want, and then we can kind of get. You want to.
You look like a lawyer, with your big old.
This has been priceless entertainment tonight.
I'm not sure whether we should.
But getting into it before Rick kind of gets into everything. This process is going to be, you know, very planning board hefty. The intent of this is where, once again, we're rewriting our ordinances for a lot of different reasons, we're rewriting them for clarification, we're rewriting them for. Where we don't get sued, where we don't have any, you know, issues, because as you know, right now, there's a lot of areas in our ordinance that either contradict, don't make sense, something and. We have been lucky in a way to not be sued for certain things, so. This project is going to be, you know, one of the biggest things that I work on that you you guys as planning board work on over the the next couple of months and something that's going to be utilized for. I mean, probably, yeah. It's just time that we blow up and start fresh and that's the direction we were headed, so I'll turn it over to to Rick from in focus.
Thank you, Hunter, my name is Rick Flo, my business card say Richard, but that's the grown up Rick Flo. And I want to take a few minutes to introduce myself and go over a couple of housekeeping things just to get us off and running and then we'll. We'll get you out of here, we're not going to go deep tonight, okay? But we do have some some important topics to to touch on, but first few minutes I want to take to tell you who I am because. I'm the new guy and you all know each other to some degree, I'm sure, some probably better than others and everything, but I think it's important that you know a little bit about me. And the most interesting thing that I know about me is how I ended up getting to this point where I'm standing here tonight. And I think that's important for you to have perspective on where I'm coming from, because I'm going to be carrying you fast and furious, drinking out of both ends of a fire hose. For at least eight months, okay, we're going to be on a ride and I just want you to know. Who's who's scouting this territory for you, okay? So I grew up in a little town in South Carolina called Greenwood, South Carolina, which there is no comparison, it is the golden uni corner of the universe. And I'll be back there Thursday, fortunately, my wife and I are going down for a weekend festivities. But I didn't know, I was raised by my grandparents and I didn't know anything about what I would do as I grew up, my grandmother always told me that she thought I should be an engineer. And 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 I tell you, she's one of at least two people that have seen something I didn't see and I don't know why they saw it. But my grandfather passed away when I turned fifteen and I was signed up for the draft, punching my ticket for Vietnam. When all that changed and when he passed away. I had to choose, I was in the tenth grade and I had to choose and in South Carolina, we had technical high schools. And being raised by your grandparents from the time you were three years old, I didn't really have a path towards college, so I said, technical. We don't really have that in North Carolina, you go through high school and then you, you might have a, you know, exceptional or some kind of special, but generally speaking, you go to high school and then you go to technical school if you want to learn how to do a. Trade or skill in Greenwood or in South Carolina, we could choose that in the tenth grade. So I graduated with a certificate in power mechanics and I was looking for a job at the local Chevy dealership or Ford dealership or give me a dealership and I'll take the job. At seventeen years old. No jobs available in nineteen seventy four for that, and so I ended up working on a major corporate strategy for the Coca-Cola Corporation when we were switching out the. Twelve ounce for the ten ounce bottles and they would come off the trucks, me and my high school class president spent that summer after high school in a warehouse sorting bottles. The dirty bottles when they came in. spent that summer after high school in a warehouse sorting bottles, the dirty bottles, when they came in. Friend of mine said, I'm going to college. And I'm gonna, I've been a surveyor this summer on a survey crew. Why don't you go apply there? So I did. Long story short, I showed up on a Monday morning in September of nineteen seventy-four, said Billy Coleman sent me. Bob Leek said, are you eighteen? I said, I will be in two weeks. He said, get in the truck and go with that crew. Four and a half years later, I had a little house, eight hundred square foot brick, carport, beautiful. Paid fourteen thousand dollars for this place. House, and I'm on the crew, survey crew, doing electronic distance measurement type work, because I was young and dumb enough and brave enough to say, sure, I'll try the new stuff instead of the conventional transits and steel tape that we call chain, plum bobs and that sort of thing. Little did I know, we'd get the red carpet rolled out for us. They didn't want the people that had that stuff in the truck wasting any time cutting a limb out of the way or anything, so everything we rolled up for, and we flew most of the time. We had our own airplane assigned to our crew, and we flew most of the time around the southeast, working on major federal and state military and all sorts of incredible projects. Because we got the tough assignments, because that equipment could help us deal with swamps or underground munitions, I mean underwater munitions, all sorts of interesting new things. At Friday afternoon in October of nineteen seventy-eight, I went in the office to get the paychecks from my crew. And in those days, there were weekly paychecks and little white envelope, and I picked mine up and got the other two guys, and I could see pink through my white envelope. I took them there, and I opened my envelope in the parking lot, and it was a, while you were out note, there's little pink pads, and it said, C, M, E, I, D. That was the initials of the president of the company. Now, I was a swivel foot, very, or close to the swivel foot at the bottom of the ladder. And he was way up at, at the very, very top of that ladder. So I go in that office, and he points his finger at me, and he says, I want you in college. We're not going to pay for it. We're going to bring you in here, we're going to put you in a design room. He said, Lander and Clemson have now teamed up to do a dual degree program in civil engineering and mathematics, and I want you in there. And I said, wow, I said, it's August, and and it's going to be next fall. And he says, I want you in there in January. New program. No college prep courses, starting on my left foot instead of my right, and I just saluted and said, yes, sir. Biggest day of my life. Had a momentary crash at the end of that day, because I told my wife, and she said, I am going to my mother's. I do not want to be broke for four years. So my wife left me that night, and I said, wow, here we go. So I started college in January of seventy-nine, twenty-two years old. And I finished. And I was still at Davis and Floyd Engineers, and based out of Greenwood, South Carolina. They've got offices all over. At the time, we had them in Boston and Houston and Atlanta and everywhere. But I wanted to do more with that. I was interested in more than just the design of the impeller and the pump and the bottom of the wet well, the sewer pump station, or the treatment plant, which I got to work on all those great projects and learned a tremendous amount, because I spent every waking moment not in the classroom, was in the office, and I literally would bounce back and forth between campuses and office. So on the last day to go off and get my masters to do more, Mr. Davis's secretary calls and says, Rick, Mr. Davis would like to see you before you leave this afternoon. So I grabbed my legal pad, my pen, and I went down there to his office at the other end of the building. He said, do me a favor. I said, yes, sir, anything, what you need. He said, while you're up there, he said, squeeze in some business courses, because one of these days, when you've got your own business, you're going to need them. Scared me to death. I thought, I do not want to be in a business person. I want to be an engineer. I want to be a planner. Eleven months after graduate school, I started my first farm. Didn't see it coming. Nineteen eighty-six, April twelfth, just had a major anniversary this week. Twenty-nine years old. I took that leap, and I started a firm. Fifteen years later, I sold that farm with forty-eight employees and five offices, four offices, a fifth being opened. And it worked nationally, and I'm very proud of my first firm. But the reason I sold it was because I had burned out. I was wearing suits every day, flying on airplanes to Glendale, Arizona, wherever else in between, from coast to coast. Burned out. And I accepted an offer from some employees, and I sold the firm. Two years later, I was completely, excuse me. A year later, I was completely soft in my head. I said, I gotta do something, and I started volunteering, chamber, et cetera, et cetera. And people started asking me, would I do something for them? Can you help us with this? Can you help us with that? The first was a church in Concord. And First Assembly. They had bought a shopping center and wanted to know what, what, you know, what to do with it, and the architect had come up with a seven trillion dollar concept. And that's not going to work, and so that launched in Focus. I said, well, this is fun. I'm gonna, I'm going to do some of this. I'm going to work for the privates for a little while, because I had a seven-year non-compete agreement in the sale of my business. So I did land development consulting for about seven years or eight years during that period, which taught me a lot about the other side of the table. I had designed infrastructure, I designed roads, water systems, I'd done all of that work, and a lot of it was from municipalities. But in working in land development, I also learned a whole lot more. I learned a lot about applying the, the things like location economics that I learned about graduate school to actual decision-making in the corporate arena, the Jim Maryfields and so forth and so on of the, of the, of the Charlotte region. And I focused in the Charlotte region and became pretty successful at doing that until the day that the engine died in two thousand eight, nine. And fortunately, I don't know how, fortunately, my non-compete agreement ran out at the same time. And I flipped the switch, and I went back to local government work. So what you're going to see in this project, and in this process, as someone who has learned a valuable lesson, that you never know how to start a business until you've sold one, because now you know what you would not do again. So I had the big three mistakes that I made the first time around as a young, sky's the limit. Nothing's too big. Yes, I could, we can handle it. Let's go. Absolutely. Entrepreneur, number one. And we got past about twenty-five employees. We had to have middle management, and that was a whole new animal for me. Costly too. Number two, trying to be an expert in multiple states is very taxing. There are tools in the toolbox. In the toolbox, that's the statutes, that's the, that's the enabling legislation that defines what you have at your disposal. The general parameters of it. You can craft those instruments within those parameters, but you don't get to make it up as an extension of the state government in North Carolina. Cross the state line, north or south, the game changes entirely. They have authority to do things we can't do. We have authority to do things they can't do. Trying to be good at all of that is not worth the paper it's written on. So we don't cross the state line unless we're on vacation. When people say, well, that doesn't expose you to new ideas. Yes, it does. We still study, we still look, we still learn. But we don't serve clients outside of North Carolina now. The new firm. That's adjustment number two. Adjustment number three, and I'm a reenactment actor on the side. You'll learn that about me. The instructions around the office are, and I can keep, I try to keep Patty Ray or our manager in check with this one, because she, she's tempted by this one sometimes. So if the bigs call, Raleigh, Fayetteville, Charlotte, Asheville, Greensboro, Winston, Wilmington, say, we've got a bad connection, and hang up the phone. I made a heck of a lot more money in those days than I do now. But I had nowhere near the satisfaction of making a difference that I do now. On the back of my business card is a corporate statement, mission statement. It's the same statement I had in the first firm. And that's because it was a quote to a professor in a political science class, because I added an extra major. One, I'll never know, but I did, in political science. I was a student that was absorbing as fast as I could. I had ti- I had to make up for lost time. And he said to me, leaving my final exam as a senior, he said, Rick, what are you going to do with this strange combination of degrees? And I said, well, someday I'd like to have firm help, and local governments be better at being local governments. That was where my heart was, and that's where it still is. So you'll learn that, for me, if this is a passionate thing, to help you be the very best at what you do, that you can be. So not only am I going to be crafting your ordinance, okay, and I'll be working with staff, taking input and listening to you, but I will be sharing with you the ins and outs of all of our duties, your duty, the governing board's duty, staff's duty, property owners, businesses, et cetera, et cetera, because there are five interests out there that we have to look for in this approach. And if we can check these five boxes, we've got good policy. It's when we have a winner and a loser that we've got issues. The citizen, however you want to define that. Local business community, which may be limited, that's your call, and we're going to get into those things I listened to y'all talk about tonight, believe you me, not tonight, though. Natural resources, that's the environment. Leadership, that's the governing board, village council, that's yourselves. That's staff, that's the whole team that makes up leadership. And last but not least, are those persons that are looking to invest in your community, whether they're local or not. We want to balance those five the right way, and you and elected officials will define that, and I will keep you in those boundaries to take you in that direction so that you don't get out of boundaries. And I will say this more than once, you are not paying me to tell you what you want to hear. You are paying me to tell you what you will need to hear and what you will need to learn. There will be tools in the toolbox to address every challenge I've heard y'all talk about. I've already got little wrenches ready to go. Remember, I've, I've got this mechanic thing, so when y'all took off on that, on that man hut, car, building, whatever it is, I was, I was sitting there thinking, remember I said I used to make a lot more money? When I sold that business, I was standing around on my property former state representative from our area, and I split fifteen acres and built two houses, and then I had my little thing like he's got to going over here. And I've, I've, I've found myself standing around all the time, looking at it going, what in the world was I thinking? And so I am a recovering car aholic. And I say that over and over and over to my friends. I am a recovering car aholic. I live now with a two-car garage and a small driveway. And I don't know how. So that's who you, that's who you've hired, is a guy that's got a very realistic approach. I tell people all the time, and I'm not shy about it, that I'm not smart enough to do this stuff the hard way. But I'm about a hundred and thirteen now, oh and one, in the courts. Well, a hundred and fourteen, we just had a, we've got an order going through right now, oh and one, and that was because the town dropped in the middle in the legal arena. I arm for bear. I prepare everything that I do to withstand the legal challenge. So if I get insistent on something, there's a reason for it. And that's the general statutes that govern what you do, okay? And we're not going to memorize statutes, and we're not going to memorize ordinances. But what you're going to learn are the nuts and bolts of ordinances and, and how these things work. I heard a lot of great questions tonight between staff and the board members, particularly chair. And I think that those were very pertinent questions. I thought it was, it demonstrated to me where we are, where we, I'm one of you now, for now, I'm going to leave eventually, but for now, I'm with you. So with that said, I've given you those introductions, and I had allowed myself eight minutes, and I know I've gone over that a little bit. But I want to also mention to you that, that in general, the project is going to roll like a game of leapfrog, okay? It's going to roll like a game of leapfrog. We're going to have a lot of little silos that we're going to be working in, and so we're going to introduce some of those silos, we'll call them articles. And then at the following meeting, we're going to review those. So you will have time once they're introduced. We're not going to be sending them out for your reading pleasure ahead of time, and here's why. Ordinances that have a narrative style to them almost always end up being replaced by ordinances that don't, because they have too many voids, gaps, and conflicting provisions in them. If you try to write a story that begins with, once upon a time, fill in the blank, somebody wanted to do a subdivision, and ends with the end, you're going to have gaps when you pick up something that's a little different or a little varied. So it's a lot easier for the silos to be very compact silos. Here's landscaping and tree protection. Here's stormwater. Here's this, here's that, all those different pieces, here's signage. So it doesn't matter if it's a, this kind of permit or that kind of permit. Here are the sign standards, period. Now, you might have some tools in the toolbox for like master sign plans and things of that nature for certain types of uniqueness, but there they will be, and then deviations or variations will have procedures for deviations and variations, but everything will be spelled out clearly. So that's how we're going to be rolling along in this. Now, a couple of things about that. Number one, I'm going to start you out with some boring stuff. And we're, and I'm going to introduce that to you in just a few minutes, and, and I'm going to do that, because that's, I got that down pat. I need to be learning more about the community while you're spending your time on some of the boring stuff. So that by the time we get to the character elements of the project, I will have learned enough about the community to where I can roll pretty fast with you, okay? So that's why I do that. It's a little bit of trickery, but I do it intentionally so that I'm not wasting my time or yours. So without further ado, I want to ask you to look under your agenda, and you will find a, a, a calendar that's two-sided. On one side, it says twenty twenty-three, and on one side, it says twenty twenty-four. Let's look at twenty twenty-three very quickly.
Hey, Melinda, I'll email you this. It's just three pages of the, kind of the outline and the schedule, but, um, I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Thank you. That sounds great.
So what you'll see on this, where it says planning board, and I've got really highlighting May through December of this year, you'll see some red lines that strike out when I'm not available. That's when I have been summoned to be with the family. We are in May, excuse me, we're in, in April, up at the top, the eighteenth, those little blue circles are your regularly scheduled meetings. The little dashed blue circles are months where I would like to request that you, at the end of your regularly scheduled meeting, continue to another date, and Hunter and I've worked this out. If this doesn't work, we can make some change. And Hunter and I worked this out. If this doesn't work, we can make some changes and that's something we need to, to try to get done soon, either, you know, maybe at your May meeting or something like that. Because I can't be here for your 16th meeting, so I really need you to, to be available maybe later that month. And we, and I've got my calendar for that so that you can continue, so that we can get rolling on this. But if you take a look at that, you'll see what I'm requesting to try to keep us moving because my part of your meeting agenda, when we meet, needs to be two hours, two. And you're still going to be drinking out of a fire hose. Okay?
And to add on this too, is my goal is, I know that's a lot, a lot to ask, but this is a big project that, like I said, is going to achieve a lot of different things. It's going to achieve, one, clarifying new ordinances, two, as, as Rick was saying, it's, it's given an opportunity for current planning board, council, everybody to learn processes, roles, all that, which I know we had that training back a few months ago, but like, it's kind of in depth and over time. I do know that we do have our regular scheduled business too. So the goal of this is one, where we, we break it up because I do know of three things coming down the pipeline right now with the rezoning application, construction documents, all that stuff that you guys have to, to review, to try to separate the two where we're not here for four or five hours where we spend an hour or two on that and then recess to either, you know, that Thursday, we did this, I think for the heritage district where we were going line by line. And it's not always going to be every month, but I need, at least for you guys to understand where it's like, when things come up, I'm trying to structure, schedule from our regular business and, and this to where we can maximize our time and, and ask, ask the best, you know, not ask too much more of you guys still meeting once a month. My goal out of, of this is I'm seeing out of the next eight months, anywhere from two to four, maybe additional meetings or, or or recess meetings per se, just because of the way the, the way that our ordinance reads now and how I can set up procedures of our regular business to kind of stack. But I don't know.
These, these recess meetings will be continuations of your same meetings. So there'll be one set of minutes, Austin. They would just show a recess and then reconvening time slot a couple of days later or whatever the selected date is. That's how that would work. So it's just one, it's still the same meeting. You wouldn't adjourn. You would recess until and then adjourn at the second part. Now, on 2024, the other side, I'm showing planning board in January and February as well. But we drop you out at the end of February because we've got to have some time with village council with a target date by the end of June. That's 15 months from now, almost. And so, you know, it's going to seem like a long time in some regards and in some regards it's going to fly. And so that's, that's, that's kind of a tentative schedule and I'll let you all work on that a little bit and get back to me, however you want to do it. We can talk about it tonight or, or not. But I want to introduce to you a couple more pages and you will have a notebook. Good old timing. Notebook. This happens to be one that I'm finishing up right now. But this is what it'll look like tabbed with each of those articles with plenty of room for you to keep your materials. And the way this will work is if I introduce article number one at the next meeting or article one through five at the next meeting, it will have a watermark on it for that meeting date. Okay, every page will be watermarked, every page has draft and that date. So if those pages get out or get around, they don't mean anything other than that's a working draft. If we have feedback and we have changes to make, or if I had to find something like a mistake that I need to correct and, and at the following meeting or any subsequent meeting, there are replacement pages. Let's say that article four, I need to replace pages seven and page seven because I found a, something I want to update, or either you've given me some feedback that we want to update. I will submit to staff an electronic file that has a new watermark on it and instruct that they only reprint page seven and eight, which is two sided, one piece of paper that will replace it. And it will have the meeting date at the time of the replacement page. So we're not going to be replacing whole sections unless a whole section does need to be replaced. But that's, that way you can, you've got the latest versions and you've got everything and we're, we're tracking along. And I can get your feedback and input and everything along the way. So I'll introduce and at the next meeting, we'll review what we introduced. And then we'll introduce more and at the next meeting, we'll review and introduce until we get all the material in your possession with those introductions and reviews. And then we'll massage and move around and get it, take it to the finish line so that you've got the entire picture in your head. Because we're going to be in the weeds on simple little things like what I listened to tonight, my fantastic special use permit and conditional zoning conversation. That's a real simple answer. Simple answer on that, given, and you'll learn more about this as we go, simple answer on that and, and Hunter is very correct. A special use permit you cannot say no to if they meet the requirements that are listed. If you don't have a bunch of requirements in your ordinance, then guess what? It's going to be real easy for them to get it. The only condition that you can impose is a condition that they accept. You cannot tell them that they have to do this. That's not the way special use permits work. So special use permits are really for the scary stuff to make sure we've got a lot of evidentiary based standards to demonstrate that this concern is going to be mitigated. Okay, that's what special use permits are really, really good at doing. The conditional zoning is the beauty of the thing. Okay, now there's a reason. Those quasi judicial decisions, if you, they meet the standards, they get it. Administrative determinations like you guys voting on a sign thing. Okay, that's, what you did is you did his job. That was what you did. That was, that in the statutes, it's called an administrative determination and you can do those. Okay, 301, 160D 301 B6, I was looking this stuff up while you're sitting there, says that you can be assigned administrative duties and that's what your current ordinance does. And 160D 403 spells out what your parameters are. Okay, you know, y'all made a recommendation on a special use permit tonight. Did you know that the law prohibits the village council from considering that in their decision? Now, if the law says you can do it. And so your ordinance lets you do that. But if somebody says, wait a minute, you know, I got this, this, this cost me an extra $100,000 because they, this is what the planning board recommended, they got you. Okay? So there's little stuff in there. We're going to be talking through that. So the reason I lean on the legislative is because look at it this way. In a rezoning, what is that thing you have to adopt that rezones? It's a little ordinance to rezone a property. And what does it contain? It contains a statement of consistency and reasonableness. You've heard, remember that? You've heard about that, right? So you're justifying the change, right? And the village council has to approve that as well when they make a change. And they can make really any change they want to, but they still have to justify it. You don't have to justify anything to say no. In fact, I will drill into you, when you vote no, stop talking. And I'm going to be saying the same thing to the village council because I want them to be here for these. I want as many of them as can attend to be here for this. So they hear what you hear as we go through this process. So, so with that said, there's a little table of contents page that will sit in the front of your notebook and there's a little reading guide that changes the order of things in that table of contents. And here's a secret code to reading this reading guide. The first two groupings, administrative and procedural and state and federal mandates. I call the first one the boring stuff because the statutes pretty much define our parameters. The biggest things we can change in some of that is maybe something in permits. How many planning board members there are? Things like that. But generally speaking, we don't get to play with whether you have to take an oath of office or not and all that stuff. That stuff has to be in there. So this, I'm not going to kid you, this is my boilerplate. Okay, that I have used forever. Starting in the nineties, Julie Cogburn, attorney on staff in my first firm, really structured a lot of this and it's morphed over the years with, to keep up with state law and to keep up with practices and things of that nature. But things like amendments, variances and appeals, there's not a lot of play in there for us to get all creative and everything. Okay? The mandates are the really boring stuff. 18 flood damage prevention, it's kind of, we take it their way, not our way. We get a couple of things we get to pick, but that's it. Stormwater and erosion settlement control, things of that nature are, we have more leeway, we can be a little more creative with stormwater. But not, you know, not, nothing really exciting except for a few things I'll point out to you. So that third grouping is where it really gets fun. That's the character elements. That's the stuff that really makes Marvin what you want Marvin to be. Because you need planning when you want to preserve and protect something or you want to specifically change something. It's when you don't care that you don't need any of what we're doing. And I, what I hear in Marvin is there's a lot of character to protect and to make sure that anything new does not take away from that character. That's what I hear in the value statements that you are saying when I hear your discussions. That's what I'm hearing from you. And those are all, I write to towns that want to be something entirely different and towns that want to be exactly the same. In fact, this one's in exactly the same. We don't want to change much by no shore. You know, tree protection is the number one thing there, stuff like that. So, so we're, I've, I've seen it. I've been around those blocks many times. So I wanted you to kind of see this and we're going to, you'll be able to, you see the two little boxes. That's when I introduce, when, when we review. So you can kind of track along with, with, with me as we go and, and doing these things. So now with that said, I've introduced this, I've introduced myself, I've introduced all of those things. There are seven members of the planning board. Right? And you like that, right? Because guess what? Now it's time to change it if you don't. This ordinance sets all that. So if you wanted 25 members, now's the time to say it. If you want to be, you know, seven looks great. To me, seven works perfectly. Seven works perfectly. Now, who is your board of adjustment? Is it your village council?
No, we actually have a separate board of adjustment.
Have a separate board.
We, I don't think I mentioned this to you, is that we've been toying with, because we've only had, we've had three variant, two variances since I've been here, but we've only had three.
They've met three times in the past seven years.
Yeah.
Okay. And the reason I see it is really to me, you, the, the three boards have different, entirely different roles. Planning boards are advisory boards and they're visionary boards. And I want to underscore that second part, they're the visionary board. They are the most important piece of this whole puzzle as a visionary board. That's your role is to be that visionary, to be that qualitative aspect. The governing board signed up for public hearings and they weigh your recommendation and what the public's saying and they get to make that final decision. So I always advise you to be visionary, let them be political. Okay? Even though it's a little natural to want to be a little political, right? I've got planning board chairman right now, the Spilett for office to run this year. That, and he'll be a great, he'll be a great council member in that particular town. And I feel like he'll get elected. So, you know, there, it's a great place to be and stay, or it's a great place to move through that process from. And you'll learn a lot about these things. Boards of adjustment are very, very good at, or should be very, very good at quasi judicial. One of the things we're going to be talking about is whether or not village council should be doing quasi judicial or board of adjustment should be doing quasi judicial. Okay? So right now, I, I, what I'm hearing is that both of those boards are in quasi judicial land. Now, my only thing about that is it's, it's playing a little bit with fire to have elected officials who want to help have to put on an evidentiary based hat and keep it on during one of those hearings and not get out of bounds or try to help. There's very clear and specific, I don't, I, I think that's a tough one. You're asking them to be the most focused and stuck in the rules with one hat and to be everybody's friend with their other hat on. And that is a tough mix to have.
One issue we ran into is with that board meeting so infrequently, people roll on and roll off board have never had an actual hearing. So whenever it comes to have an actual hearing, no one knows how to run it.
That's right. Now, and that's the beauty of kind of mashing your QJ into one place. Now, a lot of towns of small size will say, we're going to use the same pool to serve both. So you may meet once a year just to have a training session or something like that as a board of adjustment. And then the rest of the year, you're, you're planning, you got your planning board hat on, but you actually have a separate, you call to order a separate meeting and wear kind of a different attitude into that so that you're ready. Because you hope, and, and so what you've, what you've described, Austin, is not unusual. But that board's got to be ready when they're needed. Okay, when there is that quasi judicial variance or appeal. Okay, case, and it needs to be run properly and be run well. So those are just little things that will be dancing around in, in, in there as you see and how you become, the team becomes, the village council becomes a well-oiled machine. I've listened to Hunter talk tonight and I met with him this afternoon and I think he's got a lot of great ideas. And I think he's going to also grow in this process as well. So this is aimed really at, at more than just me writing what you want me to write, because if it doesn't make sense, I'll be the one to tell you. If it's, goes beyond that, I won't write it. If it's, it can't go out of bounds, folks. So with that said, that concludes my sort of introduction of myself. It's eight 15, almost eight 20. And so Hunter, I don't know if y'all want to talk about this upcoming May 30th, so we can at least punch that in with everybody here or not.
Thank you for the, for the introduction. That was, was fascinating. I, I have to have a quick question because I know you and I, you, the three of us spoke this last week about do we split it up at the two and you didn't want us to stay past nine and like, I just want to kind of poll the members of planning board that are here to say, you know, are you guys, do you have the capacity to, to reconvene at a different date? Like meeting twice in one week, is that gonna, is that going to be difficult or do we need to push through and do it all in one night? And just have like a, you know, 15 minute break or I just want to hear what people's thoughts are.
And before that answer, I just want to also mention depending on your guys' work schedule and stuff, like we can also structure to start at five, 5:30. Like I said, really, really the main, we would have them in meeting schedule, but if we want to start earlier where we deviate or allow for maybe 30 minutes to an hour of regular business, if it happens, great. If we don't have anything, we roll right into this, we get out here earlier. But I will say for the May meeting, we're already going to have the point, most likely the preliminary construction documents, Brantley property, as well as the preliminary rezoning presentation for the Scott White property. So yeah.
But we've already, but he's, he's not available.
Exactly. So
May's not even an issue. I'm just talking about like, you know, June, July, October.
May's not even an issue. I'm just talking about like, you know, June, July, October.
And like I said, this is also, this is, I, I wanted to go ahead and get some of this initial feedback. So we can plan from a staff level on, okay, if we need to recess or something, go ahead and get it in our calendar. But at the same time, this doesn't mean this is always gonna happen. As I mentioned, it could be where we don't have any normal business and we roll right into this, we knock it out. Um, it's just kind of go ahead and building a game plan where, when I, let's say if I get two more rezoning applications or something else crazy, like, where then it's not trying to say, hey, Rick, we got a good hour and a half, two hours of normal stuff. I don't get a chance to talk to you guys about it and how we wanna do it. I'm just trying to go ahead and get what, the consensus of how we wanna proceed if it comes up.
We need to make sure we have a quorum as well, like we can't have any canceled meetings, so.
Yeah, and if we.
Even if we have to like pick another date.
That's another good, good point. If you guys know that you're not going to be here for any of the regular scheduled meetings, let us know because I need to schedule with him, so we don't, he doesn't get here and we don't have a quorum.
Be helpful, and I'm sorry to put work on you, Austin, but would it be helpful for Austin to put together, um, meeting invites and then we either accept maybe or decline so that we can get?
I can add these recess dates to your calendars. That's, that's no issue. Would you need to make sure that we all commit? Because I really don't wanna have to chase you all down the day. I don't wanna have you guys be here.
Well, everyone should be able to indicate whether or not they are coming through the calendar invite, correct? I mean, I don't know.
And, and we don't.
I can't remember what you guys, what system you guys use if you're using Outlook. Yeah, most people use Outlook, I don't, but you can.
I'm just gonna throw out my preference out there. Um, if we have many items on an agenda and going several hours, that's already gonna take up, of course, a lot of our time. Well, that's just it. I get up at five o'clock every day, cause I just, I'm a morning person. So come nine o'clock at night, forget it, I'm, I'm in a fog. So my preference would be to do it on a separate night. So this way we're fresh, we don't have everything that's, that we, we just talked about. This property, that property, this variance, so on and so forth. My personal preference, I just throw that out there.
You were going to say something?
I was gonna ask the question, do you have a, um, deadline for when a, like a rezoning has to be submitted in order to be on a given monthly agenda for the planning board? Is it like three weeks in advance or month in advance or?
Are you talking about when a application?
So you'll know whether.
How many days that we have until it's. It's, it's, yeah, but it's still, most of the alleged like rezoning processes or any text movement, it's, it allows for planning board to have up to sixty days to review the application. So we do have some, and for example, that special use permit, even though it is a council decision, our ordinance currently states that the planning board has sixty days to review once it's first submitted to them. So that.
We can shift items around.
Correct. My, yeah, and that's what I'm gonna, like, if we get these big things, like I said, I'm going to already set it up to where we, we load it, we do this, and then we, we kind of then game plan, we're gonna recess and have this additional meeting.
I just would, it helps me if we're talking about having a second date available in a given week. If I kind of know ahead of time and I'm not just sitting there with that penciled in and holding it if it's not gonna happen. So if we know the agenda, three weeks in advance of the meeting or two weeks in advance of the meeting, then we'll know whether we need that second meeting or not. And that helps me and it helps you as well. So that's how I would prefer to.
Yeah.
Trying to roll with this.
For any tips, normal applicant, like, for example, a special use permit, once again, since you guys kind of review, make your recommendation. I tell the applicants, even though your packets don't go out till normally the Thursday or Friday before, I tell the applicants to have, that if they have me everything the Thursday or Friday before that, then I could potentially get in on your, um, thing. So it's like, I will kind of know roughly two weeks in advance on certain things. And, and for the most part, like the construction documents and the rezoning, that process area outline, and we have some flexibility. Both of those I do wanna, yeah, you'll, especially probably with the rezoning, you're gonna be able to give some valid, I mean, some input, ask questions. So that's going to be probably an hour, hour and a half just in that one preliminary rezoning or the preliminary presentation for the rezoning. So, um, I foresee right now, like I said, two to three. Because the only other few things coming down the pipeline, maybe a two, two additional heritage district rezonings. But even when that application is submitted, it doesn't get to you guys for at least sixty, at least two months. And that's the earliest, because they have to submit the application, I gotta review it and they have to hold their first PIM. So, and once again, that gives me time to plan saying, okay, tentative, this is when it will be first come to you guys. And then there'll be roughly a month in between that where they have to hold their second PM. So we can definitely work on that. But I do, I mean, once again, just wanna make sure that you guys are aware and, and have, go ahead and have some backup plans. So we can kind of game plan as a staff level.
I'm with Rich. I think that, uh, given the importance and the amount of information that we're going to be gesting here. And our meetings typically run longer than we anticipate all the time. That I would rather be focused on just this for the two hours instead of piling it on after a meeting. Because we're gonna do one of two things, we're either gonna rush through our meeting because we know we have two hours, which we shouldn't do. And I think that we just need to pay special attention to what we're about to learn here and just have that all by itself.
You'll be surprised how fast this goes if you can do that. It, it, it will make a big difference. I hate, uh, uh, planning boards, I must tell you, the weather are two. And no offense, Hunter, but the two that I have the highest regard for, town clerks, what I call clerk world, planning boards. Um, because they have some very tough, tough jobs. And I know that y'all get paid well for this, right, on the planning board? Yeah, I figured you did. Yeah, so. But my hat's off to you for being willing to do this. But it, it will be important, it will be a, a good experience. Um, and, you know, I'm excited, I'm looking forward to it. And it's, I'm not getting paid by the hour, okay? I'm here to, to take you down this road over this next year roughly. Um, hopefully we'll have it out of your hands in less than a year. And it'll go to the governing board and can be adopted, you know, by next summer. That would be the goal. But, but I don't wanna set an artificial deadline either, okay?
On, if we do an extra date, do you guys prefer the Thursday following? Or do you wanna do the Tuesday following as long as there's no conflicts with?
That's gonna be a problem for me.
For Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
The most popular meeting nights in the world in North Carolina are the first and second and fourth, Monday and Tuesday. There are a few third Tuesdays available out there, but not many.
What happens, um, you know, I already know the July meeting, I, I can't, I'm not here. So if we have a quorum, what's the catch up? Just watching the YouTube video?
That would probably be the best thing. They'll, I'm sure they'll get material to you. We're not a printing company, we keep our budgets in check, so all the printing and production is done here. I will be communicating with Hunter and Austin a, a couple of weeks in advance of your meetings with agenda materials. And, you know, so that they can get everything ready for you. And right now they're getting your notebook set up and everything. Uh, it's very, it's very rapid fire, okay?
And what will?
And so you, you would be able to, maybe you come back from a trip or something like that. You should be able to stop by and get a packet of material for your notebook that you missed from the meeting that you were not able to attend.
You all have mailbox that are working at the day moment, so that's.
We just can't get back there.
Come near normal hours.
We, as far as I'm concerned, we can pass them out at the meetings.
We can pass them out to meetings and, um, I know that you mentioned, but if you're okay, I, I, we're gonna have the written where you guys can mark up, but we can still include them in the digital packets that go out on the Friday, just where it's there, if you don't have an issue with it, where.
It's yours, it's yours. But it usually raises more questions because of trying to read it in that once upon a time to the context. So the introduction is better.
Yes. And, and what we can.
These meetings that we're gonna do with Mr. Rick are gonna be for public consumption as well?
Yeah.
So are your dates set in stone that you've circled and?
I've circled, the solid one I've locked into my calendar that I can be there. That's why you see the red lines when.
I know the solid ones are ours, but.
The other ones I'm holding.
Be here on the solid ones and.
I've, I've, I've already got a calendar to hold. The, their continuation meetings, if you need them.
So we.
And I've got, and I'm holding those.
Yeah, but I mean, let's say we don't have a quorum on, on one of these months where the.
We'll have to do something.
Yeah.
If we were willing to call a special meeting to make up for one, I would most likely encourage trying to push any normal business off if possible.
Yeah.
And we would just focus on this.
And we'll, as a team, when we get together to discuss the upcoming agenda, we will know whether we're gonna have enough time to deal, to like focus on this work and then we can release that second day.
Yeah, what I, what I've gathered tonight is basically if we have anything on normal business agenda that's going to last longer than, we'll say forty-five minutes should, if it lasts longer than that, then potentially we will push it off. Um, basically my goal, yeah, if we, if we only have like one normal business or some regular business item that comes up, we'll probably do that in this. But, um, depending on the magnitude, once again, I'm not going to cram like a rezoning here or rezoning, you know, review and recommendation um, into a meeting and then ho, hold this, that will be one that we probably separate. But if it's something simple as of right now, like if it's another special use permit or something that we can review and, and go through, um, we'll, we'll just still have one meeting. We can, we can kind of do that. And like I said, I will know about two, three weeks in advance, as long as everybody, you know, what's going, coming down the pipeline, so.
And that way I can monitor your progress and, and how you handle some of the proceedings that we're gonna be adjusting a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that's like I said, yeah. Yeah, and that's, like I said, if we have any normal business. Yep.
Everybody put both on your calendar.
That's right. I didn't, I wasn't able to double up all of them and I don't think that I need to.
Can we do May thirtieth? That's really the one thing we need to know tonight. The calendar.
So often I would set in their calendar a motion to continue to make it very specific for the purpose of.
I'll even have the motion in, I'll have, whenever we publish the packets, they'll have that motion preloaded in their system. So it'll, it'll be there for when they get to it.
And go ahead and have this topic on that. Agenda, it just gets, it's just a part of the mission.
I'll have them a separate item, just saying to recess if necessary.
Nice to meet you all individually and collectively, and I look forward to working with you.
And if we all do our homework, our meetings will go smoothly.
Yes.
You'll hear about it, you'll also know where we, where we take advantage of, of, of the law. Use it to our advantage.
That's great. Well, um, Austin, if you don't mind, putting those invites out.
You'll, you'll get, you'll get them sometime this, this week, be on your calendar.
Thanks, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you so much. All right, do you have any updates, Hunter?
Pointer updates, the only one I have is that, um, I don't think I got to mention this last time because we didn't have them on our community. We have received a rezoning application for, um, the Scott White property, uh, for the Marvin Heritage District commercial only. They are holding their pub, their first public information meeting tomorrow. Um, here at Village Hall, we'll have a session from three to five and six to eight. Just wanted to put it on your radar if you guys wanna come and, and, uh, learn about the project. Yeah, there, it's, in, in short, they're proposing to retrofit the existing home, um, and do an additional, uh, two, like, commercial retail buildings on, on the site. The, but that's what their preliminary conceptual design that we've discussed tomorrow, it will be like official public of what their kind of submittal is and getting their first initial feedback from the public. Um, and that's partly what did drive some of that discussion. Like I said, it's multiple properties, it's not just this one of like, how does the ordinance apply? Because they're proposing a four thousand footprint mixed-use commercial retail space with two stories. So it'd be eight thousand, well, that kind of conflicts with the current ordinance. But at the same time, like, the lot that I was mentioning, like, how does that, does that, how does that work? So it's just trying to.
What are the times for tomorrow?
For, first, the session is three to five and, and the second one is from six to eight. And it's more of a formal kind of thing, so it's like, we'll start at three and they'll kind of go through introductions, presentation. The second one, so you have the first, like one A and one B, which is this tomorrow. Then you'll have the second one, which will be after planning board's preliminary, um, review and, and stuff. Where, if you guys recall with the Jones Holmes, when they came, presented it, you guys provided a lot of good feedback, comments to them. They can go then amend their site plan, then they hold their second public information meeting of like all those feedback recommendations and if, you know, if they amended their site plan. And that one's more kind of an open house, but the first one's more kind of structured. Um, I will say that the, the applicant, that they have a good team, they're local. It's a family that's been in Marvin, lived in Marvin for a while. Um, but they've been, you know, very ten, like attentive to our ordinance, very detailed. And based off of what I, you know, discussed with them and seen so far, it's, it is kind of what we envision with the Heritage District. So, uh, I would definitely encourage you guys to come out, learn about the project, but, um, it will definitely be on, it's gonna be like your preliminary, their preliminary presentation, you guys will be on your main meeting anyway. It'll be the same thing that you'll probably go to tomorrow night. Yeah. Yeah, and like, yeah, basically it's on top of if they change from this.
It'll be recorded?
The, no. Cause yeah, this is the applicant host meeting, I am there for s- staff questions, but I have not fully reviewed their plan. So for example, like from a compliance standpoint, it, it, you know, if I get those questions, it's like, you know, haven't done my deep, my staff report and staff thing. It's like, which this is where it's kind of in the process, like, ah, does it make sense? But, you know, it's just kind of the opportunity for them to present what their vision is and what they're proposing a, and get that initial feedback from, uh, the public, um, you know, good, bad, whatever. And, uh, then they can then go from there if they want to amend to, based off of that. Or continue down that path. And really, from my understanding, so they're under contract, they will be closing before they, actual legislative decision, um, later this year from council, but they wanna try getting as much feedback as possible and, and stuff. But ultimately, I mean, I think the biggest thing is that they, they wanna keep that, the house and retrofit it and, um.
This is let, you're talking.
No, Scott White, it's Scott White's property.
Oh, I was like, why haven't I been notified? I was, I thought PIMs you were supposed to notify.
It starts, yeah.
We're mailed out to those within thirteen hundred.
Got it, white.
It, it's here, Sierra Village Hall. But.
Next to the crane store.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes. Okay, cool.
But, um, but that's, that's really the only update. And like I said, I hope, um, this UDO project's gonna be really exciting and it's gonna, like I said, really clarify. I mean, as you see, a lot of the times when we review things, it's kind of like, what are we, what, what's our role in this or what can we do? And this is gonna be that opportunity to define that, you guys will understand that. And as Rick and I were talking about earlier, there's ways to do it that's maybe not that, there's ways to do it if that's what we want in, in a different roundabout way. Like as you were saying, there's tools in the toolbox if we really wanna be restrictive on certain things. But some of those things, you technically aren't supposed to be restrictive about, but there's ways to still make it work, so. In the Heritage District. And yeah, and I am. And yeah, and I am, I am potentially expecting. Two. Elite, probably at least two more submittals by the end of the year. So. And it's kind of unclear. I didn't get really the sense from Rick because since that is a standalone document, if that's kind of incorporated into this UDO rewrite. But I'm definitely going to be leaning on him and some of his expertise on. Structure in it. We, I mean, I worked with Rick when we had Tom and they, they did help with getting it to, you know, the form base code to where it was at. And Rick and I were the ones that talked about the conditional zoning district, all this stuff. So he's very, very knowledgeable and. Either way, it's still something that I potentially with the Heritage District Form Base Code, I want to maybe go ahead and get addressed just since we do like. Since we know things are kind of coming down the pipeline, if we need to clarify and get it, get it right, let's get, do it now before we get something submitted that we don't want.
Are there any updates on the pump station, like Union County?
Um, the only update I got is that, and I, it was in January, February, the county commissioners denied the pump station application.
Got that update. I just didn't know if anything had moved since then.
The developer is looking at options and discussing their options with the county to, to still either service it. You know, sewer or, or with via pump station. But the specific details, I, like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I mean. From what basically Ben told me is that they, he, they developed a good relationship with the Odell, with Russ and the previous is like. This is their opportunity, like they, they know. That really without sewer, their property is not going to be that valuable anyway. And so they're, they're allowing Jones Holmes to look at other options per their contract. I mean, and, and just see what happens. So. From my understanding, we'll, we'll probably know more in the next month or two. I just, I don't know what conversations are being have, had with the county on their pump station and what, what all options are looking at.
Okay. I'm just, I'm curious as to how that's going to affect any other. Rezo, well, it won't necessarily affect rezoning, but any of the other property owners that have large tracts that want to develop.
The only, the only, the only other one right now that it fully impacts would be Mr. Letts. The, everything on this side. Gravity feeds and there's potential to, to connect in certain points. Venture is still a wild card. I actually do have a meeting with him and their engineers next week. Yeah, next week. To kind of look over a preliminary plan and look at their grade plan to see if it can, it can gravity feed or if a pump station is going to be potentially needed. So. But at the same time, according to the county. They don't want, they don't, commercial and other things if they, they might have. They're, I, from my understanding and what I saw is they're more willing to approve a pump station for commercial and retail purposes than they are for residential because they're trying to control the growth. So we'll just see, like I said, I'm not a hundred percent sure what Tim's. Proposing or what, what it's turning out to be, but that will definitely be something coming down the pipe.
Board member comments?
Echo your sentiments also Steph. Thank you very much for your work. Appreciate it.
Ditto here. And Melinda, you got anything? Any comments?
Not tonight. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thanks for joining us. All right. What was that?
Michael, motion is second.
Second.
Michael second.
Michael.
We'll make Michael second.